We'll now move on to presentations. Our first presentation tonight's going to be the Minnesota Department of Transportation presentation for the summer 2018 U.S. Highway 169 project update. And we have Mr. Dan Swanson from MINDOT that's going to give our presentation. So, Dan, go ahead.
Okay. Hey, I'll just, is it all right if I stay seated?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you for the introduction. So, I am Dan Swanson. I'm the project engineer for MINDOT who's going to be kind of overseeing the construction of the 169 project. So, I'll be the point of contact for anything. If there's any questions you have on anything, I can get you in touch with someone who knows. And I'll also be, you know, the state representative for many things. So, I didn't have a lot to do with the design of this project. There's others who did that, but I'm kind of taking it in from here on in. So, that's that. So, just to give an overview of the project, the project goes from St. Peter, just north of the North Junction of 22, up through, up through the Lassure to the interchange up there, to the bridge, just past County Road 8, for the northbound lanes only. So, it's a, it's a concrete overlay. So, what that is, is they'll, they'll mill the in-place pavement down to the existing concrete underneath. They'll pave a small amount of blacktop and then they will, and they'll pave eight inches of concrete on that. That will, that will raise the grade typically about four inches higher than it is now. And it's a, it's a much longer fix than typical construction with it being concrete. Also, part of this project is the replacement of northbound Robarts Creek Bridge. They're gonna, they're actually, they're gonna raise it enough so the bottom of it will have four feet extra clearance. So, that will in fact be above the flood stage for the Minnesota River. It's part of this project is kind of a continuation of the one four years ago where they raised southbound. So, what it, what it'll do by raising that downstream bridge, it'll stop it from damming up the water to where it would flood back over southbound. So, so the ultimate goal of this is to use the existing crossover that's just south of the bridge. We're going to install a north one on the other side. And therefore, you know, with the hundred-year flood, we could keep 169 open to traffic in a two, two-direction on the southbound lane kind of configuration. So, this is, it's all about, it's kind of a flood mitigation project, but the mitigation here is to, to switch people over when it floods too much. And with that, we're installing dynamic message signs. So, when it is in flood stage, we'll be able to display messages of, you know, hey, there's going to be a traffic switch ahead. We'll go ahead here. And there'll be kind of like an emergency plan for when, for when that flood does occur. Also, I should note that the southbound bridge is going to be replaced here in the next five or 10 years, I believe, to raise that above that elevation as well.
Can you clarify what you're talking about there? Where that is?
Yep. So, it's about a mile north of St. Peter. It's a, yeah, it's, it's kind of right before the, the big split. I don't know what to call it for a better term, but you know, we're northbound. When you're heading north, it kind of goes away and southbound's up on top of the hill. There's a bridge right before that, and that's the one low point in the whole kind of flood stage system. And so, with that raising, they'll do some regrading there. So, they'll do a removal on either side of the road for, for a small amount and raise the profile of the road there so that's higher as well. Yeah, is any, does everyone understand where that is kind of? And it's, it's about a mile north of St. Peter is, is where that bridge is.
Is it an actual bridge or is it just a?
Yeah, it's a bridge over Robarts Creek. There's a small creek underneath it that, that drains to the Minnesota River, which is, which is close to the highway at that point.
Is that a place where you take, can take a left turn going north?
Right after the bridge, there's a left turn into a place. I'm not sure what it is, but there's a gate on the entry. And then it's kind of right before it curves to go kind of to the low ground as southbound's up on the hill as you're heading north. Kind of hard to explain. Yeah, so, so, yeah, this will also include some other things that we typically do on a project of this magnitude. You know, we want to make sure all the culverts are, are not needing to be replaced or repaired in the near future. So, we've got several culvert linings, couple culvert replacements in that area we're regrading because we're already taking the road off. So, we'll have new culverts there, upgrading guardrail to the, to the standard, to the highway standard that's now in effect. There'll also be some high-tension cable median barrier. There'll be sporadic parts down in the project area I've outlined, but they're also going to take that north. So, on top of the hill, as you're going northbound, above the hill kind of by where, is that Cambria up there in that rest area? So, it'll be up there for another, oh, five, six miles and, and kind of in spots along the project as well. That's another safety measure with this project. There is some, some ditch grating, I'm sorry, some ditch grading around culverts to, to have better flow to them. There's also with this, there's also two, two sediment traps that are being installed as a way of, because we're lengthening around 20 turn lanes to, to make them longer, we're adding more impervious. So, what that means is we're adding more, more pavement. So, we have to have erosion control measures, permanent, sustainable ones. And there's going to be two of them. One is going to be by County Road 8 off of the, off the interchange there. The other is a couple miles south. I can't think of a good way to explain it. It's south of 348th Street, I guess, maybe half a mile. And they're both on the uphill side, or I guess that would be the west side of, of 169 for those.
Did you say they, they were?
So, one of them is, is directly off the, up off County Road 8. Yep. So, it's just an area that will, will dig in essentially a pond, something to trap sediment. So, you know, lots of times from the bluffs, they'll carry a lot of sand or dirt down and they'll get washed out in the, will be the southbound ditch. And then it'll comes through and plugs up the culvert. So, this is just a way to kind of slow the water down. And it, it's, it's more robust than that, but there'll be like a weir, like an overflow channel. It's, it's a way to treat the water before it drains to the, to the Minnesota River eventually.
Does that have to be dragged out every once in a while?
Yes, I, yes, I believe so it will. That will be, you know, it's one of those things where it won't, for the most part, it will not flow there, but during high-flow events, it'll, I, I've got a picture of it. It'll, it'll basically bypass the weir for flows that are really, and then it'll go in to this pond that will, will settle out. And those high-flow events are the ones that typically cause a lot of erosion and sedimentation and the things that clog culverts and stuff like that. So, so that's the intent there. We're going to update some lighting on the 93 interchange as well. And then the dynamic message signs I've already mentioned, just as a way to, most of the time they'll remain off. Sometimes you see these things with like extra enforcement this weekend or snow emergency alert, but their main intent is to alert traffic for when we are going to flip them into the two-directions, two-lane configuration type thing. So, that's kind of the overview of the project. I know a lot more specifics. I guess for timelines, you may have seen that we've, we've already started 169 southbound, right where they are, right where they have contracted to a single lane there is where the southern sediment pond is. So, right now they're installing a construction exit so they can haul some, some materials in there for kind of those erosion control measures. They're actually not, all of the material they're, they're digging out to make the pond, they're going right next door. So, that will remain offline off 169. They're going to haul all that to the field that's directly adjacent to where the pond is going to go. But it's just to set up some of the riprap and the, the grading materials that are necessary to, to ensure that the sedimentation does in fact occur. And we did that to, to date construction basically because come April 30, next Monday, the project will officially start where they'd be allowed to close northbound. I have it, the contractor said their intent is to close Wednesday or Thursday, halfway through next week, we'll say, weather depending is everything. And they'll use the existing crossovers, both the one that's directly south of Robarts Creek and the one that's south of the County Road 8 interchange as well. And then with that being closed, they'll remove the bridge and start the removal and replacement process for that bridge. It's likely that that stage will last a month. During that stage, they're going to build two more crossovers, one south by Highway, the North Junction of 22 in St. Peter, and one to the, the north, I believe, north of the 93, the north 93 junction that goes into Henderson there. And so, the area from, from the interchange, from County Road 8, 93 interchange to the end of the project, which is basically where the, the sewer bridge starts on 169, the, will be asphalt to bituminous, just so we don't have to regrade there to make bridge clearances underneath the interchange. But the rest of it will be concrete. So, I think it's roughly nine miles of concrete and a mile and a half of, of asphalt with this for the pavement fix.
So, if we're coming, if we're driving from St. Peter north to Lassure, where would we get off? Would we get off on the north side?
Right. So, so you would, you would switch over to southbound, south of the bridge that's being replaced. And then you travel southbound for roughly five miles until just, just before the County Road 8 interchange, the 93, the one that comes into Lassure here. And so, that would be stage one. Stage two is they're actually going, well, with the new crossovers constructed, they're going to close the North Junction of 22. We're going to close the interchange, the 93 interchange, and then people will have a longer way to travel on southbound. The contract limits the closure of the 93 interchange to 45 days. It limits the closure of the North Junction of 22 in St. Peter to 30 days, which is a much lesser traffic impact because it can get over, I think, on a side street there. But, but yeah, the, the one is going to be closed for 45 days. Looking at the contractor schedule, it's roughly mid-July through August, but the way the contract is written, it does not, it just says a 45 calendar day closure. So, when that's in place, anyone who would normally get off there would, would continue on up 169 to the 112 interchange and then kind of loop around and then go southbound and then get off that off-ramp if, if anyone chose that way to get to Lassure on the path. But, so that's, that's roughly the detour. And, you know, we, we know it's inconvenient for folks. We tried to, we tried to look in through to a number of things and, and there's just no, there is no better way to do it. There's less traffic impacts doing it that way than, than other things that were considered from what I understand.
So, you said 45 days?
Forty-five calendar days.
Actually, when to when?
So, as the schedule outlays it, it's, it's mid-July to, through August. The project itself will go through the end of September. Again, this is with typical weather. You know, this year's been pretty atypical, but with this type of project, we're not doing a lot of grading or things that where, when it rains, you're, you know, delayed for half a week or thing. So, you know, I, I think, I think it's, it's going to be through September. It'll probably be at the end of September, might be a little bit later depending on, you know, weather or whatever. The, the contract has September 28th as the last day of the project. I think the two-lane configuration will be over according to the contractor schedule mid-September. Again, that's weather dependent. So, a couple weeks before the project's over, they'll be back to full four lanes. And then they'll have the intermittent closures on both sides of the road for the guardrail updates and, and maybe the dynamic message signs. I don't know. It's, it's kind of open as to when the work will occur, so.
But as far as going south to St. Peter, that would remain the same and just be two-way traffic on that side for a while?
Yep, yeah. So, south, so south wouldn't change at all. You'd just, you'd be, obviously have to go to the outside lane when the, the other traffic is coming through. Oh, yeah, one other thing I should mention is kind of a new thing. Lots of times when we do two-way traffic on a highway, we will, will block all left turns. Here at three different spots throughout the project, we're allowing left turns just due to the nature of, of the way things are configured. A lot of the township roads, there's no good way to get in the other way. And then also, a lot of people who'll have to take a right as you're going southbound will have a spot to then turn off and turn around and take a left. They will have an intelligent traffic system, I believe is what it called, it's called. So, at those spots, they will monitor a traffic queue or basically if people are really backed up for a while, so they give you warnings ahead of time that, that to be slowed down. And with that, I should mention that the, the work zone is going to be 55, not, not 65 as existing, so.
You said that the exit, or the, the?
It'll be the, the exit and the on-ramp on the northbound side will be closed for, for 45 days, if that's what.
From July through August?
Yeah, the, the schedule says mid-July. There's, there's language in the contract which will allow them to start it earlier. So, I don't know if it's going to be, you know, whether it's going to be mid-June or, it's, it's all dependent on, on how they choose or what works best, what works best for their schedule and, and all the subcontractors they have schedules as well, so.
If you're stretching it to August on that, that means that we'd be down in exit and on-ramp during Giant Celebration, which is the third through the fifth.
Is that, that's August 3rd through 5th?
Yep. And that would be a major inconvenience and a problem for the town considering how heavily businesses and stuff rely on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can, so I'm just trying to think here. If, if it were to go after that date, it would still be 45 days. So, that would put construction into late September at that point. I'll have to go back and check the contractor's schedule. I can say I was not aware of that until now. I'm not certain if others were. I'm sure somebody at MINDOT knew about it.
I think in the interest of our citizens, I think the thing that we're going to rely on MINDOT to take care of would be making sure we have good communication regarding anything that's going to be moving with this project. And I think the way to do that would certainly be to make sure you let Jasper know of all this so we can get it on Facebook and also get it on our city website so that everybody within the community that goes to those sites would be aware of whatever the plans are that MINDOT's moving forward with.
Yep, yeah. And we have a, we have a weekly email update list. I, I will get Jasper's information to make sure he's part of that. It's kind of set up to be weekly, but if there's not a lot moving on the project, you know, two weeks or a month isn't unheard of for those things. And we send out an email as well. So, it's not just like, hey, look at this website, check it at your convenience until something comes out. But there'll be an email definitely, you know, a week ahead of time with any major traffic change at the very least, or, or anything big that's happening in the project. So, we, we've done that and we're starting to do that at MINDOT. And we found that it's most effective to do it once a month, once every couple months when big things happen, than to just blast people every week because then people stop paying attention to it. But, but yeah, you know, I'll, I'll be able to give you my contact information as well. And I would just encourage anyone to, like I said, I'm kind of, I know, I know, I'm going to know everyone involved in this project. So, I might not know the answers, but I'll know who to, who to guide you to or where you can find them as well.
Anybody have any questions for Dan regarding the 169 project? On behalf of the City Council, thank you for taking your time to inform us in regards to what's going to be going on here this summer for us.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'll just leave my contact information or, I, you've been talking, you know, Dan.
Jasper, will everybody at City Council know so we'll be able to go in? Constituents have questions in regards to what's going on, you're all going to be in a position to know, but.
Okay.
Anything through Jasper will get it to us.
And I think Ann contacted you as well or someone here, so we should be able to, to find it that way.
Go ahead, Jasper.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Can we have our members from Urban Land Institute?
What he shows on that is different than we talked about.
Yeah, no, Jasper had that up.
So, we have our members from Urban Land Institute.
Can we have our members from Urban Land Institute?
What he shows on that is different than we talked about.
Yeah, no, Jasper had that up.
So, we have our members from Urban Land Institute.
So, ULI is going to be setting this up. I think City Council will be where they're at right now. And they'll be filtering in here. They'll have some handouts that they'll give you. Also, just a reminder, turn on the mic, speak into them, get a little close to them just to make sure that everybody can hear you out. It's on live stream in Facebook Live, so.
Is it going to be okay with the phone? Is it going to be okay with the telephone?
Yeah, they should be. Yep.
So, you're, you're going to be setting this up? I think City Council will be where they're at right now. And they'll be filtering in here. They'll have some handouts that they'll give you. Also, just a reminder, turn on the mic, speak into them, get a little close to them just to make sure that everybody can hear you out. It's on live stream in Facebook Live, so.
Is it going to be okay with the phone? Is it going to be okay with the telephone? Yeah, they should be. Yep.
So, ULI is going to be setting this up? I think City Council will be where they're at right now. And they'll be filtering in here. They'll have some handouts that they'll give you. Also, just a reminder, turn on the mic, speak into them, get a little close to them just to make sure that everybody can hear you out. It's on live stream in Facebook Live, so.
Is it going to be okay with the phone? Is it going to be okay with the telephone? Yeah, they should be. Yep.
So, push and hold it down.
Three means you're, you're on, red means you're off. So, it's overall.
All right, I'll give a short introduction. Urban Land Institute Minnesota is here to kind of do a, a planning exercise with our City Council. EDA Planning Commission has all been invited. Public has been invited as well. I'll turn it over to Gordon. He can introduce his group. And then I think we'll go around and introduce all the City Council members and other board and commission members that are present.
Okay. Thank you very much and thanks for hosting us tonight. We're, we're very glad to be here. I think what we'll do is, is go around, we'll start with Kathy and we'll do some introductions. And when we get to the panel, I'll have them introduce themselves, plus give a, a short infomercial about who you are and, and what you do. So, Kathy.
Hi, I'm Kathy Bennett and I'm with the Urban Land Institute Minnesota and the Regional Council of Mayors. I'm part of the presentation this evening. I manage the Advisory Services Program for ULI and their housing initiative. Prior to my work with ULI, which is now going on almost 10 years, I worked in private consulting for cities, for developers. And prior to that, I worked in local government, HRA and EDA Director for the cities of Moundsview and Roseville.
My name's Gordon Hughes. I've worked for ULI Minnesota for about six years. I'm a has-been city manager. I, I worked for the city of Edina for many years and ended the last 12 years as city manager and retired about seven years ago and have been doing this with, with ULI Minnesota ever since, so.
Hi, I'm Mike Brennan. I live in Mankato. I grew up in Mankato too, except for about a 15-year period where I lived in the Twin Cities and Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I'm a commercial builder and developer and have a passion for urban revitalization. We've seen a lot happen in, in different cities that I've lived in over the years. And, but I have a general construction, general contracting company, and also a development company. So, glad to be here tonight.
Hi, my name is Randy Schultz. I'm with, partner with Metroplanes. We're a development company. I've been involved with Metroplanes for about 25 years. Prior to that, I was, had a life as an architect, urban designer. Metroplanes has developed about half million square feet of commercial space and, but our, our heart and soul is in housing. And we've done housing developments in 10 states in the Midwest. About half new construction and half of that work is historic rehab.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Kurtz, a municipal advisor with Ellers and Associates. And Ellers is a consulting firm that we work with cities, counties, and school districts in the upper Midwest. Our work can really be divided into three pots. One is financing or bonding projects for infrastructure and capital projects for communities. We also do a lot of work with economic development and redevelopment consulting, so just helping through the planning process on the financing and development side, again, representing cities, counties, and schools from start to finish, meaning a lot of tax increment, tax abatement, and other resources that may be available. And then the third pot really falls into financial planning, so looking at long-term planning for communities along with rate analysis for utilities.
Hello, my name's Brett Merrick. I'm the city manager in Carver. I've been in city management for about 17 years, nine years as the city administrator at Winstead, and about eight years at Carver. I've worked on some downtown and industrial development projects, and just want to say just coming in, looking at your housing stock in the downtown, you have some great homes, something you should be really, really proud of. So, thanks for having me.
Thanks. And could we go around the table and ask you to introduce yourselves?
I'm Rick Williams. I'm on the EDA here in town.
Scott Schleeter, Planning Commission.
Lyle Olson, Planning Commission.
Dave Johnson, City Council, and also a member of the EDA and our Comprehensive Plan Action Team.
I'm Gregory Hag, and I'm the mayor of La Sourd.
Johnny Fabulous, EDA Comprehensive Action Plan Team, MRF-PUC, which is our wastewater treatment, public utility. There's some other things in there too.
City Council.
City Council.
Mark Harrington with City Council, and Chairman of the HRA Board here in Sourd, as well as MRF-PUC.
I'm Noel Krugman. I'm a city council member. Also serve on the Planning Commission ex officio, and on the Airport Commission.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for hosting us tonight. If you would allow me to have a brief infomercial, ULI Minnesota is a district consul of the Urban Land Institute, which is a nonprofit research and education organization supported by its members and sponsors. Its mission is to provide leadership in the use of land and in creating thriving communities worldwide. We were established in 1936 and have over 40,000 members worldwide. ULI Minnesota's mission is grounded in developing, nurturing, and expanding relationships to make our region and state more prosperous and sustainable. How do we accomplish our work largely through the Regional Council of Mayors, which ULI Minnesota has supported and coordinated since 2004? Since then, participation in RCM has grown from eight mayors to 55 mayors. And mayor, even though it's called the Regional Council of Mayors, you're welcome to attend as well. They meet monthly voluntarily, no bylaws, no membership fees. What could be better than that? They get together for a couple hours over lunch to work together on regional and statewide issues, and they're very committed to a candid dialogue in a nonpartisan setting. Well, during the last five years, we have facilitated workshops like this in over 65 Minnesota cities, thanks to the support of Minnesota Housing and the Family Housing Fund. Our focus has been to help cities contend with the challenges of redevelopment, development and redevelopment brought about by the Great Recession and demographic and preference changes in our society, the new normal, so to speak. Tonight, we hope that we can offer some insights to you into navigating your competitive future, what you can do to try to secure the best possible development and redevelopment in the city. Our workshop's divided into four parts. I'll give an overview of some national and statewide trends that are affecting cities. Then Kathy will share with you some community change data, particular to La Sourd, things that many of you in the room already know, but not everybody knows, and it helps set the stage for our third part of our program, which is our panel discussion. We have some questions that we've prepared for the panel, based on a meeting that we had with Samantha a week or two ago, where we learned a little bit more about what's going on in town. And then we close out the evening with an interactive discussion with you. But I'll stress that the discussion between you and the panelists, we have found to be the most important part of the evening. So, when we get to the panel discussion, and you have a question or would like to weigh in, we encourage you to do that rather than necessarily to sit and wait. So, our country and region are being influenced, in our view, by four major change drivers: demographics, market forces, technology, and the resiliency of our public infrastructure. Perhaps we can look at each of these in a little more detail. Our demographic makeup is influenced by the size and the characteristics of different generations, our aging population, and cultural diversity. Although us Boomers continue to dominate Minnesota's population, the Millennials or Gen Y born between 1979 and '85 are catching up and passing the Boomers as the largest single generation in the U.S. Although they have distinct differences in their worldviews, they also share some strong opinions about what make a great community and neighborhood. The U.S. as a whole is aging, and Minnesota skews slightly older than the national averages. This is a combination of people living longer and a decline in household size that began in the late 1970s. On a statewide basis, we're getting older faster. Between 2010 and 2030, the number of adults aged 65 is expected to nearly double, while the number of younger residents will grow only modestly. In around 2020, Minnesota's 65-plus population is expected to surpass the K-12 school-age population for the first time. That demographic shift will have a major impact on our economy, workforce, housing, health systems, you name it, it will be affected. The rapid aging of our population will result in a profound increase in our households occupied by us older folks, I count myself among them. Meanwhile, households occupied by those under 65 will remain relatively flat. According to the Metropolitan Council, about 85% of household growth in the next 15 years will be in one- and two-person households occupied by those 65 or older. Minnesota's becoming more culturally diverse. I think you might be seeing that here in La Sourd. And as a result, communities will be asked to navigate a greater array of cultural needs and desires. By 2035, about 35% of the Twin Cities population will comprise communities of color. And immigrants are making up an increasing portion of our population, although Minnesota lags behind the United States as a whole. Foreign-born Americans are twice as likely to start a business as native-born Americans, making civic engagement a key area of focus for many cities. Minnesota's communities of color lag behind their neighbors in many areas, including poverty rate, homeownership rate, education, as well as housing costs, where 44% are paying more than 30% of their income on housing. Market forces, a number of these forces are shaping our region, most notably the type of housing in neighborhoods preferred by different generations, the impact of housing costs on our residents, and the mismatch between housing and jobs and the growing shortage of a trained workforce. Why is this important? In a recent survey conducted by Greater MSP, they asked recent young transplants to the region what they looked for in choosing a community to live. Overwhelmingly, the number-one attribute was the availability and affordability of housing. Other things such as proximity to work, mobility, parks, and open space entered in as well. All Gen Y'ers live downtown, right? Not really. Most actually see themselves as suburbanites or small-town folks. Interestingly though, Gen Y'ers seem to be looking for more urban amenities within the suburbs and small towns they call home. I have an example of this. In my family, I have two daughters in the middle of Gen Wydom, and until a couple years ago, one lived with her husband on the 18th floor of a 54-story apartment building in Wrigleyville in Chicago. And the other lives in the most typical suburban environment you could think of in Woodbury. And I asked my daughter from, in Chicago, what do you like about living there? And she said, "Well, Dad, I'm so close to everything. I'm close to sidewalks, trails, I'm close to parks, shopping is close by, I can ride my bike everywhere, I can walk everywhere, everything I need is right here." I asked my daughter from Woodbury what she likes about Woodbury, and she said, "Dad, everything is so close by, I can walk on trails, I can take my bike everywhere, I'm close to parks, shopping is so close by, I have everything I need right here." So, even though they live in very different settings, what seems to appeal to them are really the same thing. And I think you might find that true in your community, as you have more and more young people come in and be mindful of the types of things that they're looking for. The number of cost-burdened households, those paying more than 30% of their income, has grown to comprise almost one-half of all households in the metro area, many of whom are living before the, below the poverty level. Most are working. About 69% of households living in poverty have one or more working members. Minnesota and the metropolitan area have fared better than many other parts of the country in rebounding from the Great Recession. However, a large portion of the job growth in the region has been at wages that struggle to meet housing needs in areas where these jobs are located. As a result, there is a growing mismatch between lower, where lower-wage workers are employed and where they can find housing that they can afford. About 50% of the jobs in Greater MSP are less than are needed to afford most two-bedroom apartments. Over the next few years, regional businesses may struggle to find talented and qualified employees. This workforce shortage could become one of the most important factors in business expansion and business location decisions. A few months ago, at a ULI workshop, we heard from both Amazon and Shutterfly, who are very much basing their expansion and business decisions on the availability of a nearby workforce. And I suspect that may be something that you are faced with here. According to Greater MSP, our region remains challenging to recruit for ranking 19th among the top 25 U.S. metros in attracting new talent. But the good news is, we rank first in our ability to retain people once they are here. Hopefully, they didn't come this winter or spring, but in large measure, when we have them here, they stay. E-commerce has changed the face of retailing, not just for Minnesota, but nationwide, where it accounts for almost $1.2 trillion, the total retail market, and is growing an average of 15% annually since the Great Recession. By contrast, the construction of new retail space dropped precipitously during and after the recession, and has not recovered to pre-recession levels. Many consider the U.S. to be over-stored, meaning that many retailers have more stores than they need and can sustainably support. This means that those retail centers that are succeeding are covering a larger trade area than they have in the past. Technology, new and developing technology affects us all. Automation may be the flipside of a shortage of a qualified workforce. Our research suggests that up to 47% of American jobs may be automated over the next couple of decades. Hopefully, city managers are not among what gets automated, probably not, but I think it's always mindful for many professions to think about that. Technology is enabling new kinds of services that are changing and challenging existing business models, and how people spend their money is changing as a result. The speed with which technology makes it possible for people to get what they want means that access is becoming more important than outright ownership. I have to admit, not many of the logos on the screen I'm familiar with. A contemporary of mine says that's because I keep looking for WoWorse and Ben Franklin on there, and they're not there. But I looked at this closer today, and in fact, I am using Lyft, I am using VRBO, and I actually recognize what a couple others are. So, I guess I'm joining the new millennials in knowing what these are all about. Some technologies will affect cities more than others. Autonomous vehicles, you've probably read about, could dramatically shift how people get around, how many cars they own if any, and street and parking design for cities. Whether you believe that driverless cars will be here in five years or in 25 years, infrastructure decisions being made by cities today have a lifespan that's greater than even the most pessimistic forecast for the transformation of our fleet. Many automobile companies, as you've probably read lately, are preparing for the transition and shifting their focus from being an automobile manufacturer to a mobility services provider, a whole different way that they're looking at transportation in the future. And, you know, General Motors, Ford Smart Mobility are early versions of this. Today, parking takes up a huge amount of land in our communities. Autonomous vehicles have the potential to dramatically increase the number of parking spaces we need. This will create opportunities to repurpose large amounts of land for other uses. Although most of it is private property, public land will also be impacted. Unlike people, driverless cars are highly predictable and reliably follow the rules. As such, they need fewer lanes to move the same number of people safely, and they can do so in narrower lanes as well. So, something we urge all cities to think about is the profound changes to our public infrastructure that will be brought about by autonomous vehicles. Resiliency has become an important responsibility for all our communities. Changing technology and the growing interconnectedness of things means that more and more parts of our built environment and lives will be at risk of being compromised, and communities of all sizes need to think about their own strategy for ensuring cyber security. I think when I first started at Edina, we could turn on and off the water supply to the whole city with a pretty big pipe wrench. Not the case anymore. And as the issues arose in the city of Blaine last year, which were not cyber security-related, it does show the vulnerability of many of today's systems that are controlled by new technologies. The size and specifications of warehouse facilities has grown substantially to accommodate the need for distribution centers. As the need for industrial and warehouse facilities have changed, many cities are left with outdated buildings with unclear futures. Instead of simply hoping for redevelopment, some communities have embraced new ways to use these older structures, such as maker spaces and collaborative workspaces, that can put these buildings to new uses. Planning and paying for infrastructure upkeep has always been costly to cities. It's likely to consume even more resources in the future. In older communities, roads, water, and sewer infrastructures are reaching the end of their useful life, and financial resources available in the past may not be available today. Long-term communities will likely be asked to take on more responsibility than they have in the past. How many of us are getting sick of the 100-year rain or the 100-year flood that's happening every few years? Overloaded and underdesigned storm sewers are examples of the struggles that all of us face to be resilient cities in the next century. We hear it from our real estate leaders from time and again, green space and connectedness to places of interest via trails and sidewalks are highly desirable when they consider where to pursue development. These are some of the most cost-effective infrastructure investments you can make into your community. In addition to making your community more attractive for investment, they also encourage healthy lifestyles and are highly desirable amenities for prospective residents. We can't stress that enough, and perhaps some of our panelists may have comments on that later. When we put this all together, we realize that many forces are at work shaping the development of our community. Attitudes and lifestyles of the next generation and Boomers, the high cost of commuting, affordability, diversity, traditional values, changes in retailing and warehouse space for cities like you. There's still roads to build, water treatment plants to pay for, and schools to fill, and I dare say, higher expectations from your residents probably. We believe that the most successful cities will be those that provide a collaborative approach to development and redevelopment, and we hope to share some of those ideas with you tonight. So, with that, Kathy, perhaps you can share some change data relative to La Sourd.
Sure. Great, thanks, Gordon. Like Gordon mentioned, I'm going to just go through some specific data for La Sourd, some demographic information, some housing stock information, employment and labor information, et cetera. Again, I Again, I think if you've been going through your comp planning process, this information is not necessarily going to be new to you. I just may put a little different skew on it, and it'll also help prepare for the panel discussion. Okay, so first, I'm going to start off with demographic change in the city of La Sure by specific age groups. With about nearly four thousand in total population in 2016, La Sure experienced some growth between two thousand and two thousand and ten, and a decline, just a slight decline in population after two thousand and ten to twenty sixteen. The average growth of cities is an average of about four to five percent between that same time period, so you were lagging behind the average growth of most cities. Breaking this down a little bit more detail by just different population groups, there's a couple of things to point out. The largest population sector are those who are middle-aged, that's thirty-five to fifty-four. They make up about twenty-three percent of the population, with the second largest being the baby boomers at twenty-two percent. The middle-aged population declined by about fourteen percent since 2010, and the growth of the baby boomers is likely that a share of that population aged into the next category. So the loss of those thirty-five to fifty-four probably was the gain of those fifty-five to seventy-four, and we refer to that as aging in place. Most people, when they're in the community at that age group, they really want to tend to stay in the community, and that's reflective in this data. Looking at the oldest portion of the population, those over seventy-five, they make up a fairly small percentage of the total population, at about nine percent in La Sure, although I'd have to say that that percentage is a little bit larger than in most cities, it's about five percent. This age group lost population since twenty and ten, which is not something we typically see. We see this part of the population in most cities growing, and in some cases, growing very, very rapidly. There may be questions as to why that might be occurring for your community. Do you have options for this age group to move into? And that might be something you want to look into as you plan for other different housing types. What's happening to the youngest generation? There's growth for those fifteen to twenty-four, as well as those twenty-five to thirty-four. This is that Gen Y group that Gordon talked a lot about in his presentation, and really, this is the age group that you want to try to retain in your community. They are the aged groups that are looking at putting down roots, potentially buying their first home, looking to start families, et cetera. Sorry about the slides. Somehow, I think when you go to different places, the formatting gets funky, but we'll just kind of work through it. It seems like you should be able to see everything. What I did for this slide is I wanted to compare La Sure with the age breakdown with other communities surrounding La Sure. And actually, I would say that you're most similar to Henderson, and La Sure has probably the largest percentage of those who are aged fifty-five to seventy-four compared to these other communities. Next, as Gordon mentioned, Minnesota's becoming more culturally diverse, and La Sure is experiencing growth in both race and ethnicity since two thousand, where the population of people of color is up from eleven percent in two thousand to twenty percent in two thousand and sixteen. And looking at the data a little bit closer, that's mostly the Hispanic and Latino populations in your community that are making up that growth. Projections indicate that this trend will continue, not only in Minnesota, but in the country, and probably in most small towns as well. I attended a ULI national meeting, and one of the points that was made is that this is the only growth sector that they're seeing that's going to help contribute to the labor force needs of the future. And actually, in Minnesota, it's projected that we'll experience an eleven thousand to fifteen thousand dollar, fifteen thousand number, job gap by 2020, which honestly, 2020 is right around the corner. So trying to make up that gap, this is going to be an important contribution to our economy. So where and in what types of homes are the residents in your city living? Sixty-three percent are homeowners, twenty-nine percent are renters, with about an eight percent vacancy. The average vacancy is around four to five percent for other communities that we've studied. Breaking this down by the type of home, regardless of ownership or rental status, the majority of your home housing stock is single-family detached at seventy-two percent. There's only about five percent of what we consider to be attached multifamily, that would be something other than apartments and/or duplexes or triplexes. Twenty-two percent in more of the traditional four-plus unit apartment complexes.
What did you say the attached multifamily was again?
That is, so it could be condos, townhomes, duplexes, fourplexes.
Okay, thank you.
And then we always like to compare this owner-renter kind of breakdown with other peer communities, and looking at Jordan Henderson, Carver, and Belle Plaine, La Sure has more rental, renter occupied housing than those other cities, aside from Jordan, who has a little bit more. Very similar to Jordan, to Henderson, much different than Carver and Belle Plaine. I was actually struck by Belle Plaine's vacancy rate, which that is very high, and it could potentially be, when the data was done, they maybe had a couple of new products come online, and they just weren't occupied yet. Or they had a high rate of foreclosures or something, so. The value of housing and rent levels has an impact on the local market as well as the ability to attract new and future residents to find homes. By far, the majority, about eighty percent of the ownership housing stock could be considered affordable, meaning that they have a value under two hundred thousand. The average listing in two thousand and sixteen, according to Zillow, was about a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so you're below that two hundred thousand. So I suspect that that's more in line with what your overall housing value is. Only about twenty percent of the housing value was over two hundred thousand, and virtually no housing had a higher value of five hundred thousand or above. And La Sure's gross rent is also very affordable, with over ninety percent of the rental options under a thousand dollars per month. The median rent in two thousand and sixteen is about eight hundred and seventy-three dollars per month, with a rental vacancy rate of approximately four and a half percent. And about five percent is considered fully occupied. When you get below that, then demand starts to put pressure on rents, as well as potentially needing more of that housing stock. What this chart shows is housing that is affordable at typical area median income levels, and the area median income levels are defined by the HUD, federal HUD, for the region. About twenty-eight percent of the housing is considered affordable to a household making less than fifty percent of the area median income. However, the majority of that is housing affordable to those making thirty percent or less of the, thirty percent of the area median income or less, which is very low income, that's about twenty-five thousand per year. And fifty-five percent is affordable to those over eighty percent of the area median There's a growing number of cost-burdened residents, both owning and renting home across the region and the country. In La Sure, about nine percent of the population is to be considered living in poverty. Again, that's those making under that thirty percent of the area median income, and that's about twenty-five thousand dollars wages for a family of four. However, this percentage in population has virtually stayed the same, maybe went up about one percent since the two thousand census, and we've seen this number for most communities double. So La Sure is staying very stable in that regard. The bar graph at the right indicates the percentage of households that are cost-burdened, meaning that they are paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing, and that can be for anyone who's making very low income to anyone who is making a high income. If they're paying more for housing than thirty percent of their income, then they're considered cost-burdened. In La Sure, about twenty-nine percent of those total households are cost-burdened, and when you break that down by people who are owning homes and those who are renting, more of the ownership, those who own homes are cost-burdened in La Sure than those renting. And again, when we look at this statistic in other communities, it's usually flipped. Usually, more people who are renting are cost-burdened than those who are owning. This slide compares La Sure with its peer communities related to median household income. La Sure has a lower household income compared to these cities, but is most similar to Henderson. Shifting a little bit to employment and the labor force, this chart provides a breakdown of the industries by employment numbers in La Sure. In two thousand and sixteen, there was an estimated three thousand total jobs in the city. About fifty-four percent of the jobs are in manufacturing, and you probably all know why that is. You have some pretty big manufacturing companies here in your city. Also, about seven percent in education services, seven percent in healthcare, and I combined retail, accommodation, and food service, because those are usually the industries that pay the lowest wages, and you have about eight percent of your labor force in those industry sectors. The city of La Sure is considered a net importer of jobs, meaning that there are more employees coming to the city to work, that's the dark green, than the residents that are working, and that's the light green. Approximately eight hundred and thirty-one residents are both able to live and work in the city, which is actually really a great percentage when we compare other cities to the average, and I'll show you that here in a little bit more detail. So looking closer at the data, the labor force data, this pie chart is a breakdown of the labor pool, which is the number of jobs in the city and where the employees come from for those jobs. Twenty-seven percent of the total jobs are held by residents. That's well above the average that we see in the other cities that we've studied, which is about between twelve and fifteen percent. Few other cities that have a very high resident percentage is Shakopee is about thirty percent, Woodbury is about twenty-five percent, but most other cities are much more in line with the, in the teens. And this chart shows the breakdown of other locations where employees come from for work. Most, the majority are from surrounding counties. And what this pie chart shows is where your resident workers commute to. Considering that about sixty-two percent of your residents probably commute outside of the city for work, eleven percent are commuted to Hennepin County, while only six percent commute within other cities in the county, which I thought was a little bit So that concludes the data with regards to La Sure. I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions you might have before we get into the panel discussion, and then I just wanted to leave you with a couple of thoughts about what we've learned over the last six years in sixty-five presentations that we've done, is that one of the most important things for a city is to have a long-term vision, strategy, and understand the tools for your community. And we're leaving behind some materials for you to look at that also talks about in more detail these guiding principles, for you to kind of review and go through with your city after this presentation and panel discussion here today.
Okay, thanks Kathy. And again, before we move on to the panel, we've thrown a lot of data at you. Any questions before we move on? Yes, Mayor?
The vacancy rate of eight percent, we're lucky enough to have one of our realtors here in town, that seemed about right in regards to what our housing stock is compared to our...
Might be a little bit lower.
Yeah. Because you were saying it's four to five percent as the average.
Is the average, so you're thinking that yours is lower than eight percent?
Seems like we're enjoying a pretty good opportunity right now, people selling their homes and things here in La Sure. It doesn't seem like properties are on the market very long, at least when you look at Zillow or, you know, some of that type of stuff. So I was just kind of curious what the expert realtor had to say about all this.
I suspect that vacancy rate percentage can shift, just depending upon what's going on in the market, too. Yep.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ruth.
I was just, you throw out a lot of numbers that weren't part of your slides, are you able to share those with us?
I have all the background data that I will share with Samantha. Yep, absolutely.
Talking about the labor force resident worries or workers?
Yep.
You had indicated that La Sure with eight hundred and thirty-one people that live here and work here, that that was relatively high. And when we looked at that data in the comp plan, where we said seventy percent of the people that live here work somewhere else, and seventy percent of the people that work here live somewhere else, we were, I was thinking that was, that was the opposite, that wasn't a good deal. But can you kind of talk about that?
The average is about twelve to fifteen percent. I think in a lot of cases, there's always a mismatch between where people live and where they choose to work. But the average is about twelve to fifteen percent, so I think you're doing pretty good. I think as you become more rural, in rural cities, that percentage shifts quite a bit, because there isn't as many opportunities, but being that you're close to the metropolitan area, your residents probably have a lot more opportunity to look for potentially higher wage jobs and willing to drive for those jobs.
So the places that are twelve to fifteen percent, they only retain twelve to fifteen percent, are you just talking about the greater metropolitan area?
Mostly, the majority of the workshops and the cities that we've studied have been in the metropolitan region. So say, for instance, like a Plymouth, they may have like only a twelve percent, because it is so easy for a resident to work wherever in the metropolitan region. I think the city of Minneapolis is only about eighteen percent.
So I think it's eighty-five percent of that population is commuting.
Absolutely.
That's, that's...
Have you been on four ninety-four?
Why, I know, but... Why I moved out of the Twin Cities. That's a huge percentage of people commuting.
While looking at those numbers, it's clear that you've got ample workforce and only eight percent of housing that is vacant. Some of that is houses that need to be torn down and redone completely. But it seems, based on those numbers with what you have for workforce, there's not anywhere near enough housing to be able to, we would have a much larger population considering with the amount of workforce that we had, if we had the housing.
Yeah, you need to have people come into your community to fill all the jobs that you have. Now, a lot of cities, that's flipped, that they don't have as many, they have a lot more housing than they do jobs, but you're fortunate in that regard, so you have an opportunity to potentially look at ways to develop housing that might attract the people who work here that might want to live here.
So to break it down one step, the reason we're a four thousand population is because we haven't done enough to be a ten thousand population, and we have enough jobs to probably support maybe, maybe a ten thousand, maybe an eight thousand. But it's possible, just based on what we've got as far as jobs go.
I think that's a good potential discussion point as we get into the panel discussion as well, so, yeah.
I have one question. Looking at the total population of La Sure compared to the number of jobs that we have, how does that compare to like other communities as far as percentages go? Do we have more jobs per capita available than like Plymouth? Or is that even a metric that we should even be looking at?
I would say, I would say that it's not very common to have very, to have even circles, if that makes sense. And it varies between community, mostly based upon what the industry is within that community. So it really does vary, but say a community like, I don't know, let me think of one, I'm just going to say Moundsview, they probably have a lot more housing than they do jobs, or even a community like... Or even a community like Hugo, they have a lot more resident base than they do jobs. So their circles are completely different.
If I may, with autonomous vehicles, and I won't go to any evaluation of what they might be like and what safety and all that, that's not it. Is it possible that a community like this would grow because people would have an easier commute to go further distances and perhaps even have a group, you know, large number of people in one vehicle commuting?
I would say your guess is as good as mine, but I think the most, there are two sides of the coin, that it will allow more people to live in the urban area, but it will also, because there will be more opportunities for increasing the amount of living environments because they won't need it so much for parking. But it will also provide more opportunity for those who want to and or choose to live farther from work. And to do that with driverless cars because they could be working while they're, while they're getting to their workplace. So I think it's, it's very possible.
You know, in an environment like, like La Sourd where you may not have the feasibility of other mass transit types of things, driverless cars, the way you described it, could be a great alternative for people living here that could, could get to a job farther away in a mass transit-like vehicle, but it's really a driverless car that's, that they're perhaps sharing with a few other people. So I, I think I'm with you. I think there is maybe an opportunity here.
We do have a legacy of that with the Green Giant. We, I don't know how many of those vans we still have that commute to the cities. I know of at least one. We used to have a whole fleet of these things that would take people back and forth when the headquarters moved, et cetera, so.
Not uncommon from what Amazon is doing with their shuttles to Minneapolis for workers, so kind of the same thing.
Can you expand a little bit on that driverless vehicles, use, the impact on, on infrastructure? Can you clarify that again?
Yeah, I, I think the, the notion that we understand is that in terms of public infrastructure, things like street width, the streets are going to be able to carry a much higher capacity in a smaller space than they do now. And things like parking structures especially, that, that perhaps won't be needed in their present form, but cities need to think about parking ramps that they're building today being converted to some other use because they're not needed as parking ramp anymore. So both of those things tend to, I think, are impacted eventually by, by autonomous vehicles.
And you can bring it down even to the house. If people won't need garage, you know, three-car garages like they did in the past, that it could open up more opportunity for expanding their living right on site because they won't need those garages.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about a suburb, one of the cities, and about people who live in that suburb and travel outside of it to go to work. Well, here in La Sourd, and those people are still in the metropolitan air, area and are kind of treated as one set of num, numbers. We here, if, if we, if we live here and work out of town and it's only five miles away or ten, our numbers are treated as though we're leaving our town. Can you comment on that?
Well.
I think the same, same thing would apply to a suburban community as well. If I'm, if I'm going from, if I'm living, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If I'm living in Plymouth and working in Minnetonka, I'm also counted as leaving, leaving town.
Yeah. So if you, say if you live in La Sourd and work in Jordan, you're not going very far, but you're not, you're not working and living in the community. Same with what Gordon said about like Plymouth and Minnetonka.
Okay, should we get on to our panel? And again, I encourage you as we, as we go through, we have some prepared questions for the panelists, but please don't be bashful about jumping in during the, during the course of this discussion. So Randy, I'm going to start with you, since you're kind of our veteran panelist tonight. Talk a bit about what more the city can do to promote a full range of housing choices and how to make La Sourd more inclusive, livable for, for all ages. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think some of these questions were, were really appropriate when it comes to housing and how you retain these people in my mind that are already working in La Sourd. What sort of options do you provide for them? What do you do with, with the city as far as redevelopment to encourage people to remain here, to make it a, a livable, exciting place to, to be? And Gordon had mentioned in his presentation, the importance of housing to those younger folks that are so critical to the future of, of the community, and how the downtown is such an amenity that those folks look for, whether they're living in Chicago or they're living in La Sourd or Woodbury, it doesn't matter, they're looking for those same things, connections, downtown, social network. It's interesting, there was a poll done some years ago by the Knight Foundation, not McKnight, but the Knight Foundation and the Gallup folks. And they polled several thousand people, and, and the poll was all about what does it take to attract and retain people in a city? And the, the, the guess was that jobs were going to be so important to the, to the retention and the attractiveness, but they weren't. Jobs and salaries weren't that important. What was important was a welcoming, open feeling, having social offerings that were meaningful to people, and having an aesthetically pleasing city. And the jobs and the, the people just kind of came with those goals. So how do you achieve those? You know, the aesthetics, I'll start there. I think things that we've already mentioned, walking paths and trails are essential. Out of that study, there was a quote that, that said, "Connected people stay and grow; disconnected people leave." So the aesthetics of a city, the streetscape, I think you've, you've got a great start downtown, and to your credit, it's exciting to see the downtown master plan. A lot of opportunity with, within this. But on the streetscape element, you've got some great, I think, lighting already. Being in a lot of cities, I see sometimes lighting that's kind of tacky and not appropriate to a downtown. Your, your lighting looks, looks just really nice. And streetscape is something that I find is not an enormous economic commitment, relative bang for buck. And some of the things, you've got a great skilled labor force here. If, I, I can envision even designing things like, like maybe benches, those types of things for the city, that if you, if you had a designer, an architect, somebody, you know, putting a package together, maybe you could even involve members of the city rather than go out and, and buy expensive things. People that live here could, could contribute to the, to that goal. Social offerings, festivals, public spaces, some of which are mentioned in, in the study, the importance of those, having open space, filling in some of the infill with buildings, but leaving key areas where, where things, things can occur. Connections to the public institutions are, are very important. So reinforcing those paths to schools and, and churches, and especially those, those that are in close proximity to downtown so that people can get downtown and congregate downtown. I think there, there's something really missing in, in this study, which I would call a gateway to La Sourd, coming in from one sixty-nine on Bridge Street. You come under the bridge and all of a sudden you've arrived, but the arrival is, is maybe less than what you'd want it to be. But the potential, I think, is, is huge. When you hit Main, Main Street or Main Avenue, as you go to the left, you've got the, the Mayo House, which is just a gem. You've got a little park, and that park, to me, could be developed into something that could reinforce the Mayo Building. I noticed, I've got here a little early and drove around, and these big Green Giant things are up by a museum that, you know, you'd need to be, be a Boy Scout to find that museum. And, you know, why not incorporate some of those elements where you kind of reinforce that node? When we're designing buildings, we never have an ample budget, and you're always thinking, where, where, where can I put, what's that special thing I can do to this building so it comes off as really an exciting place? And I think that node of downtown that you arrive at when you come on Bridge Street from one sixty-nine is just so important to, you know, especially since you can't do everything at once, start, start somewhere and, and start there where it, where it could be really meaningful. And when you take a right on Main, of course, there's the, the shopping center interrupting Main, which the, the study identifies, and, and, and it's kind of like the elephant in the room. You know, what, what, what happens to that? Is it little chunks of it that disappear and, and try to run Main through? At what point are you just better off kind of, you know, I can say, maybe politically incorrect things, you know, is it just better to get rid of it? Just, it should go and, and reconstruct really what should be there?
Randy, is there an opportunity in the downtown environment to intensify housing?
I, I, I think, I think.
You know, to provide a little broader range of?
I, I think very much, there are so many infill sites, and a community like La Sourd, I think it doesn't necessarily want a, a big housing block. There, there are these smaller areas which duplexes, quads, townhomes, rowhomes that, that line the street. If you, if you create that kind of variety for people, I think you're going to automatically hit those age groups that, for whatever reason, are, are declining. And even the senior population, if there are some alternatives like that, they're, they're going to be encouraged to leave their houses. And Brent made the remark, driving around, you've just got great housing stock in the neighbors, neighborhoods surrounding downtown. And as the seniors depart those, you know, there could be incentives for fixing those places up, and they could make just terrific homes for folks with kids and, and some of the younger, younger folks in the community.
Randy, you've done projects in a lot of, a lot of cities. Does La Sourd remind you of any particular place that you've worked that has some interesting housing things going? Ah, unfair question because I didn't preview this to you at all, but does anything come to mind in terms of a community of this size?
It's, I, I was going to mention that a community of this size is, is really, it's a little bit under our radar as a company, and not to say that we're, everything we do is large scale. It's not, we do as few as maybe twenty-four, thirty units. But population-wise, we don't usually, we're not usually involved in cities of four thousand. And what I do see is more local developers and builders that really know the market can be almost more effective. The problem there is that sometimes they don't have the vision, and the design standard and the level you want to get to to kind of ramp up the, the quality of what's available. I think as a city, you need to find a way to establish that. And you might establish that with some design standards. You might establish it hiring an architect, and the right architect is, believe me, not that expensive, but, but there can be some drawings of this is kind of the vision that we have and the expectation, and open it up to RFP, to more local builder developers. They don't have to be only in La Sourd, but Mankato and, and surrounding communities. You know, put some properties together. I, I know the city owns some properties, but you could do an RFP collaboratively with other property owners, short of, you know, actually accumulating the properties. You could partner with those property owners. But I, but I think that variety is just, it's so essential.
Just to piggyback off of what Randy had said, the city of Carver actually went through a process. We hired a architect, we have a historic district, but it would lend itself here as well, where every single property in the downtown has a kind of a full build-out for historical character. So when an opportunity presents itself, we have a local commission that goes over to see if they comply with that standard. I could, we can share that document, but it's really a small step so that when you have an opportunity that's presented, you can seize it rather than when you have a developer ready to go or a homeowner that wants to, to do something, you have to wait and say, well, what's our process? What would we like to see? You're, you just hand them the book or the page and say, this is what the community values, this is what we want to see, how can we help you deliver on this?
So being upfront about, here, here's our vision, here's, here's what we have in mind, so that a potential developer coming in could have a real clear understanding of whether they're, of what they're thinking about is going to make sense in the community or whether it's not. So it sounds like you've gotten ahead of that.
It really gives, selfishly, it really gives staff the, the tools that they need to, to move. You know, you'll have somebody, we just had somebody that bought a home, probably about two blocks away from our former city hall. It's been in disrepair for as long as I've been in the community. He bought the home, he's eager to get going, and usually folks like that don't want to wait till the next planning commission meeting or the city council meeting that's in three weeks. We had a document that says, hey, you know, this is what we need you to do, these are the guidelines, and we were able to have a real candid conversation about what the expectations were. There are some things that he'd prefer not to see in there, but at least he goes in eyes wide open. And we had that conversation before he went to closing, so he knew right away. And so, you know, on my way here today, I could see he had people in the air clearing out all the underbrush, and really gives you a sense that something's being accomplished because you can see that work happen right away.
How many of you have had the opportunity to take a look at our downtown master plan and our comprehensive plan? I heard a couple of you make reference to it already, and I guess my question would be, what are your thoughts in regards to what La Sourd's been doing over the last couple of years regarding both those documents and what our vision seems to be moving forward?
Any thoughts? Mike, do you?
Okay, maybe I should jump in. Okay, all right, thanks. That, I think that ties in with my question, Mayor, which is, what's the climate for development in, in La Sourd? And to give a little bit of my background with that, Ed Cheetah, who I think most people know him, he's a friend of mine, and probably three years ago, maybe going on four years ago, he called me as a developer out of Mankato to look at the mall, and there was some discussion about what could happen with that. And, you know, through that I met Samantha a couple summers ago. I love taking old, underutilized. I love taking old, underutilized diamond in the rough buildings and renovating them. If you've been in Mankato, downtown Mankato, the Land Camera Building, you know, we've got Number Four Restaurant in that, that's something I developed, ooh, 12 or 13 years ago, and now it's a mixed use. It's got the restaurant on the first floor and offices on the second and third floor and lower level. But I can't tell you how many times I've walked through the mall and should it all be gone? Should part of it be gone? And does it have architectural relevance? And I'm in the camp with you that I think it needs to be gone, if you can find the right thing to take its place. And I say that, and there's probably maybe people in here that are involved in ownership of that, I get how complicated that is. And I'm probably going to vary from your question a little bit, Mayor, but the two words I would use to describe La Sourd based on intermittent involvement with people here over the last three or four years is a little bit stuck and untapped. And so, when I think of the word stuck, I think of the mall. You know, that's the centerpiece of the whole proposal, and what do you do with it? And it blocks the connection of the south and the north, and yeah, what to be done with that? And that's a big deal. You know, it's expensive, and there's people that own it, and people have their businesses in it. And so, that's what I think, when I think of the word stuck. But I also want to say untapped. You know, when I go around downtown La Sourd, I see as many historic, beautiful, older buildings as even Mankato has. So there's, you know, like with some of the beautiful, older home stock you have, you've got some beautiful buildings too. So those are the two words I would use to describe, but maybe I should get back to your question if I'm addressing it. Okay, yeah. So anyways, that was probably what I was going to say when it was my turn to speak, just having a little bit of a familiarity with what's going on in La Sourd.
Can I piggyback on that? Can I just piggyback on that? So how would you see us getting unstuck?
Oh, okay. I'm a Jane Jacobs disciple. I bet some people here know of Jane Jacobs. She was an urban writer. I'm reading one of her books now. She wrote it 60 years ago, and what she said 60 years ago about American cities is panning out to be very true. You do it one step at a time, and we've all heard that kind of cliche, one step at a time. I like the study. I think the study is a good overall direction to go. But then I skimmed through that today, and then I thought, okay, well, what's the first step to take? I liked a lot of things that you said about all these general, important aspects of healthy You know, having a downtown community, and I might be saying things that are already happening, and I'm sorry, I don't know all the goings-on in La Sourd, but, you know, my exposure to La Sourd, I love your golf course. I love coming here early and going downtown for breakfast first. There's this beautiful, cool little family-owned diner downtown, some of the historic buildings, the Mayo House. But to get unstuck, you need to have the next successful project. And it's not going to be a big mall, you know, malls in general are having problems. It's going to be that next locally-owned, you know, like the flower shop that I've been to downtown, or the restaurant, that next step. But then, you know, probably bigger than that, to really get together and what should happen with that mall? You know, that's the big, several-year-long question to answer. Yeah. One thing that you said is about art. Art is a good, inexpensive way to stimulate a community. You know, what we did in Mankato probably four or five years ago, some of the businesses we got together and we connected with maybe four other cities, and so we have the revolving artscapes. I wonder if La Sourd could get involved in that. That is, it's such a big deal. And then with that came another coffee shop a few years ago, Tandem Bagels, you know, right across the street from my office. So you get unstuck one step at a time, you know, the next little nice restaurant, and art, benches, things like that.
Rebecca, my guess is that you've helped some cities get unstuck over the years. Any thoughts that you have on it?
Well, I would agree that it's one step at a time, and it's really breaking that down into those pieces that you can, knowing where the big vision is, but breaking it into little pieces that can be accomplished. And the community in general has some great assets from, you're starting there with some of those activities to create the vibrancy and get things happen with, I know your downtown lighting and the Christmas activities and the Market Fest, but it's creating those things that are going to keep people wanting to come down there. And I think it's both the residents, but then also creating that excitement to get people to come off of 169 and come check out your downtown. So, you know, it is, as Mike said, what is that next step with that small shop? Or is it the brewery? Or is it looking at creating more trails? You're in a beautiful part of the state, right by the river, beautiful terrain. Is it making that connectivity with trails for, you know, walking, hiking, mountain biking? What is that unique niche that gets those visitors here? But with all that, as we've talked about, there is that elephant in the room, that you drive in, you're excited to see what happens, and you come to the mall, and kind of where do you go from here? And so I think it's figuring out the answer to that. But with your no vacancies in the downtown, there's a lot of potential for that vibrancy to expand from what it already is, and, you know, that opportunity to create that sense of place. But it's just getting the people, people down there.
So what I've heard in some other presentations is about being ready if a development opportunity comes along. So being ready to know and understand what you would, how you would help that. So I don't know, Rebecca, maybe as you work with cities with regards to their business subsidy policies and policies on financing, how you would be engaged, that might be something that they can get ready for if an opportunity comes.
Well, as Brett said, with, you know, knowing what you want from your design guidelines, or we talked about having housing guidelines, along with that, if you're looking at, or I know you have provided some tax increment assistance, but if you're looking at providing those tools, whether it be TIF or revolving loan fund monies, or grant, or low-interest loan opportunities, any of those types of assistance, it is getting those tools in place so that you know. It's always better to have a policy that's created ahead of time, that is set around the goals that you have and where you want to be, as opposed to, again, having somebody come in and go, oh, well, you want to build a building and, you know, it's stick construction, just wood, no brick, no glass, outside of a couple windows. That's not what we want. And it's harder to make that decision when you have that proposal that you're excited about right in front of you. So getting tools like, as Kathy said, your business subsidy policy, what will we provide assistance on? What is important as far as job creation or as far as wage before we provide assistance? And have those, that planning and those discussions now so that you don't create a policy that is around this exciting project that comes. And as part of that, know, I think it was mentioned in the PowerPoint, know what resources you have, whether they are local assistance that you want to provide, is it partnerships with resources through the county or the region, the state? Know those tools that are available. Know which ones you want to use. And for example, tax abatement, if you're not interested in ever providing tax abatement assistance, or if you're only interested in providing it in extremely limited situations, have that discussion and lay it out so that that discussion and decision doesn't need to be made when that project is in front of you.
Mike, I've heard from other developers that a fast snow is better than a slow maybe when it comes to a city's, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
Well, I've heard all four of the panel's members discuss or talk about the mall being the white elephant in the room. The, yes, there is being stuck and untapped. However, I still have a mall that's sitting there that is 38%, if the number was correct today, then it's full. That's not helping the financial situation of the people that have ownership in that mall and desperately want to see the thing better. And there's not going to be a financial solution for tearing this thing down anytime soon because you've got, developers aren't exactly coming right into town and saying, oh, I can't wait to touch that. Just tear the building down for me. All right? They want to work with a blank slate. And I was in the industry for 25 years, so my feeling in this, when I look at it, is that, one, it's probably more looking towards... My feeling is, is that we should be kind of focusing on driving businesses into using the mall. Start getting funds coming in, paying down the debt that's on that, and start making it look lucrative, at which point now you start looking at what your options are going to be, because you've got a positive cash flow coming in on it, and it shows that you're getting ready, you're in a better position to do something about it. Driving people downtown and into the mall and around the mall and on the property that is directly, which is actually the front of the mall, which everybody, it feels more like the back of the mall, is the pedestrian mall, having events and doing things down there. Getting people used to being down into the downtown, where there are businesses that connect through that, yeah, absolutely, we want to get a road to be able to go through if that's feasible to be able to do it. But in the meantime, you can't not do something. You can't not drive people down there. That's not going to get more businesses into this town. I don't like the idea of just writing off, well, it's got to go. Well, that might be true in the future, but our future, what we're doing, what we're dealing with is right now. And then right now, we have more space inside of that mall available for businesses than we do through the entire downtown right now. And it needs to get used.
Can I ask a question?
If you've got ideas on that, let me know.
If I could first, please. Maybe another way to ask John's question is a personal joke. What kind of experience with the 50-some-odd cities in the 15 years or 30 years that you've been doing this, what kind of experiences have you had that relate to our unique position here and now, as John talked about?
With the mall.
With the mall.
Mankato.
Mike, go ahead.
How about the Mankato Mall? You know, our Petri developed that back in the 70s, and that was hugely successful when that was first built as retail. But then, like what happened all over America, the malls outside of town were built, River Hills Mall in 1991, so the retail left it. I don't think it was ever thought about to tear down the Mankato Mall, but that made a transition. Now it's largely government tenants. And another example, close by, Madison East in Mankato, you know, that was built in the late 60s, and it lost its retail to River Hills Mall. Well, the Fisher Group repurposed that into largely a medical clinic. So I believe that phenomenon is pretty common around the country. You know, I lived in Cedar Rapids for four years. They had two malls, and it pulled all the retail out of the downtown, so the downtown had to redefine itself. And maybe that's, you know, aside from should the building, should the mall stay, should it be reduced, or should it be gone, maybe another parallel question is, what is the downtown? And I don't even know if you can define that. You know, Madison East, you know, the realtors that turned that around, they like to take all the credit for, oh, yeah, we turned it into a medical facility. Well, no, they didn't. The medical facility found it and enjoyed the low rent. So Mankato Clinic and Orthopedic Clinic and Mayo has an office there. And I'm sorry that takes too much time here, but I actually have a question for you. Have, you know, like I said, I've spent time walking in that mall, going from side to like a pendulum, back and forth. Should it stay? Should it be? Have you ever worked with an architect to talk about the different pros and cons? First of all, from a design standpoint, you know, if you want to open up that street and take out probably a third of the width of the mall, I just wonder if architecturally speaking, if that could be an attractive storefront. You know, you lose the option to have a second or third floor for housing and have it be kind of a mixed use. And that's kind of where I landed on this, oh, maybe six months ago or nine months ago, realizing, ooh, that's, to me, that seems like the answer, both from an economic standpoint, where you've got three floors of use. But again, I hate tearing down buildings. And I realize how difficult this decision is. But anyways, my point is, and I'll turn over the mic, but have you, and my question is, have you ever worked with an architect for different design concepts? You know, it's hinted at in the report, but I wonder if it would be worth a few thousand dollars to actually have some pros and cons from a design standpoint, and then a developer could take that and put some sources and uses and costs and benefit and things like that to it? That's my question.
Mayor.
When we commissioned the downtown master plan study, obviously, the mall was a pretty big focus of that study. So Hoyzington, they certainly spent the time evaluating what all the various scenarios would be, including to go ahead and build above, you know, for housing. Also, the possibility of utilizing the parking lot for housing options as well. So not, we have not talked with an architect per se, but certainly, you know, the consulting group that we worked with certainly brought some of these ideas to us. Right now, obviously, I think the big problem that we're looking at is, of course, we have an ownership group that is ultimately responsible for anything regarding decisions with the mall. It's not something that's within the periphery of the city to make those decisions. So that's kind of like where we're at right now with the whole thing.
Mayor, I know in the studies that Mike is talking about, the downtown master plan, Hoyzington looked at some financial in scenario A, B, C. And I didn't spend any time looking at the financial stuff, but is there a number that's been arrived at which, that would make that thing go away? Was there an assumption that Hoyzington made?
Would make what go away?
The mall.
In other words, what would it take to buy it out, tear it down?
Right, right. I didn't know if Hoyzington built that into their financial analysis.
Not in any real specific way.
Okay.
Like Jasper, you...
I agree with Mike in the sense that of hiring somebody, you can do anything with any building. We've, believe me, we've had 10-story old hotels that have been condemned by a structural engineer and said, they've got to go. You know, it's got, there's no other alternative, and we've saved them, because there's different motivations for different outcomes, right? When a consultant looks at something. I can think of an architect that we work with a fair amount in Minneapolis who, as an example, converted, I think it was an old... converted, I think it was an old Target that had been abandoned and converted it to a library, and it won national awards. So, can you do something with a nondescript building? You can, and maybe there's some value in the bones there, that, you know, you've got a foundation. You've got some structure. Could it be, could it be reduced in some way? And is the structure sufficient enough for, could it be tagged on to, to, to come up with housing above? To, you know, provide that kind of mixed use? But i- in my mind, the most basic thing you, that's got to be achieved is getting Main Street through there. That, that's, in my mind, it shouldn't be even under discussion.
Can you, I was going to ask that question. Seems to me one of the major things that came out of there was opening Main Street. And parallel to that is what he'd do with the mall. So, can you, can you all, or some of you, comment on that concept?
Well, you're, you're, you're cutting off part of downtown, from, from the rest of downtown. I mean, you're really isolating, you've got to drive around that building. And, you know, I think you're, I think that hurts the other businesses on Main Street down by the theater. How, how can that, how can those storefronts, how can those businesses be improved? How can those property values increase? And, and that area is just ripe for little boutiques or little, little cafe, you know, those sorts of uses. But people have to get there. When they come in from one sixty-nine, they've got to realize that they're there. And right now, you, you drive in and you're just confronted with that building. I turn, I turned in there and adding to the problem is, it's one way, and then you're, you get in there and you have to turn around. And it, the circulation just is very complex.
Together with that, in two years, we have a state highway one twelve turnback project that goes through that intersection you talked about. You talked about a gateway as you come up, get some kind of a gateway into the city, ninety-three coming up. We have one twelve coming from the other way that comes up to that intersection and goes north down Main Street. So that's tied in. A lot of this pivots on, in a short period of time here, what we do with Main Street in this turnback project. Is that fair to say? That that, the decision on opening or opening Main Street is, could be a catalyst for a lot of other things happening, like a festival street and?
I, I think so, and it's, it's very simple for us to come in here and sit on a panel and say, this is what should happen. And the folks in the trenches, staff and Brent knows this because he's got a city to run.
It brings up a good segue, because I feel like I've been a part of this conversation, fill in the blank on whether it's a mall or, you know, some other business. And I think often cities are, we talked about this last week, cities are uncomfortable in their own skin, kind of a lot like teenagers, frankly. You aspire to be something, I, you know, I wanted to be a professional basketball player, just if I was only six-eight, I would have made it. And so I, I feel like this conversation is kind of a replication of that, is, you know, La Sourd would be great if only for that mall. And I think, although that's a noble cause, to try to figure that out, whether it's to preserve it, whether it's to reconstruct it, or add senior housing, et cetera, those are all fun and exciting. But I also feel like there's a lot of missed opportunities and time, you know, wasted trying to, to navigate that. We've spent considerable amount of time, but it's going to have to marry, marry that opportunity with, you know, everything else that's going on with the community. But I think back to Randy's initial comments, there are plenty of things that you can do to create value for that mall that might end up lending itself to that opportunity. One of the things that I noticed immediately is you have a lot of parking, at least that's my perception. There's a lot of blacktop and thinking about, you know, instead of looking at it from an expansion, like how can we get more people? I look at as, how can you keep the people here that are here? So that fifteen to thirty-four age range, what's going to make them stay here? And so I think of the place making, the community gathering spots, you know. So that big parking lot at the mall, could you have a farmer's market? Could you add a lot of landscaping? Could you do some downtown concerts, festivals, fundraisers, et cetera? There could be small things done to the mall. I, I was talking to Gordon at the start, you know, there's, you drive right up into it and it's the dumpster enclosures. There's plenty of, plenty of space in that parking lot to relocate those dumpster enclosures to that side of the mall. And do kind of a, you know, make it, and I grew up in St. Cloud, so I think of the, the St. Germain Mall, the outdoor mall. So can you, you know, with lack of having somebody like Mike or Randy come in to kind of save the day? Could you do some small things in cooperation with the owners to make that mall, you know, a lot better? Add some grass, add some trees, have a beanbag league out there, have some outdoor music. Maybe you have some window openings in the mall to create some energy. But I think as somebody in that age range as well, if I create those connections, those partnerships, where I gather a group of our neighbors and we come downtown and are in a beanbag league in that mall, or there's a farmer's market, that's the thing that's going to make me stay when I feel like there's an opportunity, you know, forty minutes from here, you know, that I might start looking. But it's this, you know, when I started off in Winston, you know, they almost let off every piece of their literature with saying, you know, only forty-five minutes from Minneapolis. And I understand that connotation, but when you start off by saying that you're forty-five minutes from somewhere else, you're not really embracing who you are. I mean, I was so impressed, and I thought a lot about, frankly, Winston with all the, you know, the jobs that you have here and the ingenuity with, you know, the Frog Tape, Cambria, Green Giant, you know, there's some real opportunities as it lends itself to public art, to, you know, St. Paul has the Snoopy stuff. I mean, you could do some interesting things with Frog Tape and Cambria, where, you know, we have, Carver, we have a, a walking tour open, a walking tour for historic homes. Had it interned, put that together. You could do some things where when people come to La Sourd, they could say, oh, yeah, they have this cute little walking tour where you can see the Mayo House, and they have a thing with Frog Tape and Cambria. And if you can have a series of those smaller pieces that don't cost a lot of money, that people can get behind, then you start building momentum. You build the narrative, the story. Because without that, you keep talking about you wish that you were six-eight, or you wish that the mall was open, or the, or the mall was torn down. And that might happen, but it might not happen for ten years. And I'd hate to see a community that's as strong as yours wait ten years for something that is going to be a difficult project, frankly.
Question.
Yes, Mayor.
Our image of our community, you know, we, we were always Green Giant, you know, Valley of the Jolly, Green Giant took great pride in it. Green Giant left, but we kind of hung on to it as, you know, we just didn't want that Green Giant to go away in our image. In the communities you've worked in, have you seen that kind of situation happen where perhaps it was time to change the concept of who we are and not necessarily, in our case, be the town of the Green Giant, but somebody else?
If I can follow up, because I think Winston, no, Winston, the mayor of Carver would kill me right now.
We won't let him know.
Yeah. I think Carver is a, a great example of someone who embraced that. And so Carver was, you know, the last spot along the Minnesota River that you could bring a steamboat. And so, at one point, they talked about Carver being the county seat for Carver County, and it didn't work out. But there are, you know, we have over a hundred buildings on the National Register of Historic Places, you know, eighteen eighties, you know, early nineteen hundreds. And using your same example, Carver could have said, you know, that happened, you know, a hundred and twenty years ago. We need to talk about the new development towards two twelve. But what Carver has done is, and we're still working on it, but they've created a brand that that's our brand. So there's antique shops, vintage sales, and bars and restaurants, that's the thing. And so, you always, I think I have a proponent of looking toward the future and growing. But I wouldn't define being successful by the number of residents that you have here, unless you're like declining. But if, if you're steady, there's a lot of value in, you know, you know, I was talking to my wife about where I was going to be tonight, and I said, I'm going to La Sourd. And she's like, well, where's that? You know, and we live in Carver, you'd think, what'd she know? And I'm like, well, that's that, where that Green Giant sign is on the way to Mankato. Oh, you know, and so that's what she knows of, of La Sourd. And so I'm, I'm very, I'd, I'd guess that a lot of folks have that same piece. And so you already have a built-in branding piece with that billboard, and what could you do to capitalize on that? You know, so, yes, they're still not here making, you know, canning green beans and corn, et cetera. But there's a story to tell about what it was like then, that people, people are nostalgic, they love history. The Mayo House is a, is a prime example. You know, there's a big part of La Sourd's history that involves Green Giant. Doesn't mean you have to live in the fifties and sixties, but there's some value in telling the existing generation and visitors what that story is.
There's a couple of points that have come up, and they tie back to some points previously made, but to your current point, there's a lot of people, including I think our present city administrator, or maybe our present mayor, who only knew of La Sourd as a place where the, the road curves and crosses the river and goes up a hill. And they may have been here five times in their entire lifetime until they had a reason to come here more, more freak, frequently. This point was brought out in some of the long-range planning work that, that, that was done. And the need for short-term goals and intermediate-length goals and long, long-term goals. So one of the ideas, and Sam's going to hit me in the head pretty soon, is that it was mentioned by a resident that maybe we need an ultra-modern road sign out there, not just a big bulletin board with a single message. But one that can have a multitude of messages relevant to not only the day of the week, but also the time of the day, and what the people going by might have a need to satisfy by coming off the road and coming into town and then going out of town again. The other thing I'd like to mention is a lot of the talk has been based on coming in on County Road twenty-three from the west. But I personally believe after forty-plus years of living here, that a higher percentage of the traffic comes in from the north. Comes in at the north end and leaves to go out to the north end. And I haven't seen any studies, but I, it's just a personal opinion of mine. So I would like to, to say that maybe the development of some short-term, less expensive, very visitor-oriented type activities, messages, businesses geared to getting people off the road and into our town might be the thing we can do while that long-term drudgery work of, of doing what we need to do with the downtown area and maybe renaming the mall a new name, so that new name helps gives it a new purpose and goal.
Randy, when, when we were having our pre-game meeting, you mentioned, I drive a lot on, I'm putting words in your mouth now, but I drive a lot on one sixty-nine. And I would really like to, my, my car would like to point its way into La Sourd, as opposed to pointing its way into some other towns.
Yeah. It was really helpful, first of all, getting together with Samantha and, and having this pre-game where she gave us, you know, some of the information that you're talking about, and this dilemma about Green Giant came up. The importance of the past and where do we go in the future? And Kathy made the comment toward the end of our session that, you know, I just feel like there's something there with Green Giant. You just can't turn our backs on it. And I can say, because of family, I've traveled one sixty-nine since I was a kid. And the Green Giant has always been an enormous landmark in, in my mind. And I still travel one sixty-nine a lot. I'm, I'm, I'm always looking for a coffee stop when I get out of the cities and head south. And I'm never comfortable stopping in St. Peter because it's just seems like you're on the highway, and I never know quite where to stop and pull over, and traffic is moving. And I get to Mankato and, and it's just kind of confusing to me where to get off and on. And, you know, roads are going like this. And, and I thought, what, what a great opportunity for La Sourd to, to have some, you know, I don't know what the signage says, but if, but if people could get off and just take a little break, their kids, you know, get introduced to the Green Giant, you know, come under the bridge and land downtown, and you're at this destination by the, let's, let's ignore the shopping center and turn left to the Mayo House. And maybe some of the Green Giant, I'll call it artwork, the, the, you know, those, those pieces that are up at the museum get transplanted to the, to the park around the Mayo House. And, and maybe there's some coffee, the place you can get coffee. And, and I know the cheese, what's the cheese group here? They, they, they have a shop in their building. But, but why not have, like Brent was mentioning, where you, and Samantha was talking about this idea of entrepreneurship that was, that's always been strong in La Sourd, where a little idea grows into something big, right? And how can you get much bigger than the Green Giant, you know, or, or the Mayo? Or, you know, and you could have a little informational, you know, you could buy cheese, you could get coffee, you could buy some Frog Tape. I mean, you could have, you know, I could envision a little, you know, just something to provide an identity to La Sourd that's different than Carver, that, that's different than Henderson to, you know, and it could tie into then, this is the, I don't know where you're at, Sam, with the, the incentive, the whole entrepreneur grant, grant or monies you were looking for. But it seems like they're trying to key into Mankato State, right? And, and develop Jasper some, some connection there and maybe mentoring for new businesses and entrepreneurs. You know, maybe, maybe there's a whole story, whoops, a whole story to tell there.
Rebecca, you have a comment?
Well, just piggybacking on the entrepreneur theme, as we've talked about, there is that strong history. And some huge companies have come out with the entrepreneur, because of the entrepreneurial, sorry, I can't say that word correctly, you know what I mean? But because of that spirit. And I think on top of that, there's those opportunities for new large companies to come. But it's also looking at those very small entrepreneurs that, you know, we may not even know who they are or what they're really doing. And that might also be a resource for helping create that vibrancy downtown. It's that person making widgets or candy or artwork, whatever the case is, that is getting to that point where they've been in their garage or in their back room making it. But they're looking for that, that next step to become known or have a larger presence and don't need a lot of space, but have something unique. And also then help create that kind of destination that when people come in, you know, if you're going to purchase something, I personally would rather purchase it from, you know, that unique individual coffee shop or unique artist or store versus, you know, going to Applebee's or whatever the case may be, nothing against Applebee's. But, you know, that, it, it gives you that better flavor of what the community is that you're visiting.
You know, I, I, I grew up in Worthington, the turkey capital of the world, right? It's kind of akin to the Green Giant. Lord knows, I don't know that there's been a turkey within twenty miles of Worthington for, outside of on the Thanksgiving table for probably sixty years. But yet, it's the turkey capital of the world. And what do they do on Turkey Day is they have a turkey race with a city in Texas who also claims to be the turkey capital of the world, who also I don't think has a turkey living within a hundred miles of it. So, you know, the notion that, and I, I can't remember the last time I saw an ad on TV with the Green Giant saying, oh, 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 Green Giant. It's been many years. So I, I suspect that the notion of most people under the age of forty, that somehow Green Giant is associated that somehow Green Giant is associated with a canning company that cans vegetables for us is probably, they probably don't make that connection. And the notion of having this mythical Green Giant as you come into the valley, so what if it doesn't have anything to do with? I am not talking, too much chicanery here, but so, so what if there's not a, a big employer called Green Giant here anymore canning vegetables? It doesn't matter for people under thirty-five, they have no notion of the connection between the, the jolly Green Giant and the vegetables they eat anyway. It's a different issue. It's, 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 it's a myth in the nicest sense of the, greatest sense of the word, that it seems to me you could leverage. So why, why get rid of that brand? It's a, it's a terrific brand that the city has. And so what if it's not, they're not here, people don't make that connection?
We just have to get the Green Giant to have a unicorn for it.
There you go. There you go. Somebody had a.
Well, Kathy had mentioned at our session, you know, what kid wouldn't like to get their picture taken next to the Green Giant?
I've gotten off track on our questions, but that is just fine and, and dandy, because I think we've had a, a great conversation on it. Brent, anything, other things come to your mind in terms, I guess what we were talking about a little bit is our successful cities? You know, what are, what are hap- what's happening in successful cities, uh, that create a great atmosphere, um, for development?
Sure.
And, um, I, I'll often hear of the vision thing, how important that is?
Yeah, I, and it's been mentioned quite a bit tonight, but the, the things that, you know, I like to talk about are, and we've talked about that tonight is, you know, who you are, who you are as a community, um, what you wanna be. But I think that, you know, the third question in that is, is why, and that's probably the most important. So, um, I've heard some talk about, you know, more housing or people living and working here or, you know, having, being a population of a certain number. Or can, maybe you compare yourselves to Henderson or Bell Plain and to, to what end, you know, why? And if you're not comfortable with the why, then I think I would advocate for you to start over with, you know, who you are again and what you wanna be. We're oftentimes in a, so we border, literally border Chaska, Victoria and Chanhasan. And so sometimes there's this tendency to say, well, we wish we were like Chaska and had a, you know, eighteen-hole municipal golf course that everyone loved and a curling center. But we're not Chaska, you know, or, and, you know, we're a community of almost five thousand people. And when we had, we had actually, probably about a year ago, we had ULI come out. And one of the biggest takeaways that we had as a group planning commission, city council was, you know, you know, we had Mills Fleet Farm build in two thousand and ten and we had this notion that we were gonna get a big box to be constructed every other year. Well, that isn't happening, you know, and these folks probably could have told us that. Um, but now we're comfortable that we don't need to be out there soliciting those stores every day. You know, that's not, you know, no matter what level of effort we put out, we're not gonna get Target or Hy-Vee to construct. And so we're more focused on building our resources, doing these smaller projects, creating momentum, uh, creating that story. And we're focused right now on residential. And so we, I think we have a great story to tell and that when people come out, they see the historic downtown, we built, there's a new elementary school. Um, but it really, I think, is a primer for that vision, what you wanna be, not just the brand, not just the Green Giant pieces, but you know, how do you wanna interact with, you know, business? I think you're in a, a really unique and, and kind of a, a great opportunity to have Jasper and I think Sam, uh, new to the city. And so trusting them, they're gonna have some, probably some different ideas and pathways that might be uncomfortable. But it's a, it's frankly a really unique opportunity. You have some folks that have been here for a long time, understand the community. Uh, but they're probably gonna push you and they should, I would at least advocate for that. To make decisions and talk about things that are uncomfortable and the mall is one of them, but there's, you know, whether it's, you know, a business subsidy, uh, whether that's a certain policy, um, there will be some uncomfortable conversations and some norms that are disrupted. And to be okay with that, um, but I, you know, I keep pushing back to the, to the vision and understanding what you wanna be and why. And if you're comfortable with what you wanna be and how you wanna get there and for what purpose. Um, and you just keep talking about it. We do, uh, quarterly updates on our action plan, you know. You know, there's a comment earlier about the downtown master plan and the comp plan. Um, I, you know, those things are definitely needed, but I think they can be kinda unwieldy, meaning that you get this a hundred-page document that really you spend a lot of time on. But, I mean, truth be told, after you get past it, you know, it's cracked open maybe once a year, right? And so do you have a document that's one page that you could hand to somebody and say, these are our values? This is what, this is what we're trying to accomplish in two thousand and eighteen? And you're giving Jasper and Samantha and the rest of your staff the ability to execute that uh, without having to, you know, consistently come back and get permission. You say, alright, go out and do this stuff, staff, we're gonna support you. Uh, and they come back and get feedback, but I, I think that creates the momentum, the narrative for you to be successful.
And I forewarned some of you that I was gonna ask this question, but not all. Um, if, if they're, but that's okay, because, yeah. Um, if, if you have a, in a sentence or two, I'm gonna ask each one of you, in a sentence or two, what's the most important takeaway that you would like to leave, um, with the city tonight as we wrap this up? And Randy, can I start with you?
Sure. I, I think my takeaway would be, uh, housing. And not to think about the eighty-unit, large apartment building coming in and, and, uh, being the solution to the housing, uh, shortage, but rather looking at variety and choice. Um, and looking at those smaller developments that are achievable rather than waiting for, you know, the, the, the big developer to come in and do something that's, that's really, uh, grabs everybody's attention because the, the townhomes and row homes and, um, really it's the, it's the way, you know, generations before us kind of, kind of grew up. If you look at Minneapolis now, they're considering and already fighting about the new fourplex proposals, you know, changing the zoning in, in the city and densifying, uh, proposing fourplexes that weren't allowed previously. But a lot of people, younger people, um, that's how they, that's how they started out. They, they maybe bought a duplex and lived in one unit and ran it out of unit. And, you know, it sort of bridged the, the income, uh, problem as they were m- moving up the ladder. So I think all of, you've got some great infill sites, um, multiple infill sites, and many of them are smaller uh, and can just accommodate, you know, X number of units. And so I would really consider, uh, doing that. And, and, uh, I think Brent spoke eloquently about, you know, provi- providing, don't let just anybody come in and, and develop whatever they want to. And with any aesthetic that they want to, but be careful about setting some guidelines and, you know, establishing a direction that, that you as a city.
You've had more, you've had more than one year thought. But I didn't ask you to cover all four. Right, so Brent, how many sentences was it? It was a big run-on.
I'll try to be brief. I guess I'd have two thoughts if I can.
Two sentences.
Two sentences. I would work on capitalizing on low-hanging fruit, you know, so whatever those are, you know. Uh, don't come up with ten projects, come up with, you know, five projects. And two of them should be, you know, done in the next thirty days. And then when you are able to do that, the second piece I would say is celebrate that success, you know. So take some pictures and say, we said we were gonna do it, we did it, and here's the next thing that we're gonna do. I think left to not doing that, you have this big hundred-page document and a big mall that is gonna be hard to, to figure out. So, you know, get those, get those small projects rolling. And then when the opportunity comes for the big one, you know, then you're all jazzed up and ready, you know that you can finish projects, so.
Perfect. Rebecca?
I would piggyback actually on what Brett, Brent said, that, um, get those small projects done, get moving immediately for those successes. But during that also be thinking longer-term in your, um, kind of medium-term goals and where you wanna be and how you can start working on those. And then the very long-term goals and figuring out what you need to have in place to accomplish those. But with those really long-term goals, be patient, keep taking baby steps to get toward them. But know that, um, that type of large project doesn't come overnight. And it's gonna take longer than you probably want it to take. But if you're patient and keep taking those small steps, it will come.
Mike?
So there's other vacant malls around our country. I would try to find out what other communities are doing with these vacant malls as far as repurposing. Um, and maybe start over with a kind of a fresh look at what to do with it. And it might cost just a little bit of money, but I, I, but I would start thinking out of the box, you know, what, what are the options? What's the best way to go? Um, what's, what's best for the current ownership of the mall? And, um, yeah, just to start to think, again, start thinking about what are the options there and, and what looks like the best, um, path to take?
Well, thank you again for hosting us tonight. We've enjoyed it. We hope that, uh, you found it worthwhile. We will generate a memo in a couple of weeks that summarizes some of the thoughts that were expressed tonight. We'll also send by way of Sam a, um, a follow-up survey and we'll ask her to share it with all of you who attended tonight to give us feedback. We're always looking for ways to improve, um, our offerings from ULI and hope you can take a minute to, to complete that when it comes your way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of our city council and our EDA and our planning and zoning committee, it's been a very, very eye-opening experience to have you all here. And thank you for sharing everything that you did. I think also our citizenry here that's represented, I think they benefit it from as well. So thank you guys again. How about another round of applause for our?
Yeah, right. I'll stay awake. How about you?
Can I go ahead and get a motion to, uh, recess for, let's say, ten minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move. Will you recess for ten minutes?
Is there a second? On favor? We got some gear on, can I? Got a few items, dude.
I don't know what happened there, but I do know what happened, but I don't know what happened. I don't know, maybe two fresh resolutions. Are you sitting right here? Yeah, okay. Two new resolutions. I have a couple of mistakes. I'll, I'll tell you what they are when I come up. Yes, and the attorney made me fix her memo because we're not completely committed and we're just taking it out of her, and they were okay with it.
Okay, we're going to get started here, so if everybody could take their seats. Welcome to everybody that's taken the time to be here tonight. Hopefully you all had an opportunity to learn a little bit about not only the Highway 169 project, but also that presentation we just had regarding everything associated with what the company and the staff is all about. So, some good things for La Sure coming forward. So, thank you again for your patience. We're going to move into the rest of our agenda for tonight. First thing on the agenda now, of course, is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizens or requests, in which event, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Tonight, we have two items on our consent agenda. It's the city council minutes for April 9th, 2018, and the approval of disbursements through April 23rd, 2018. Councilmember Krogman has made a modification to the minutes portion, so Councilmember Krogman, if you'd please...
Well, Mr. Mayor, do we remove that from the consent agenda, or just have this be a part of it?
Why don't we just go ahead and have it be a part of it?
Okay. What I've suggested here is that we revise the wording from, with regard to Resolution R 2018-10, taking out the words "supporting the city of La Sure's local decision-making authority" and opposing any legislation that removes this ability, changing those words to stating that the council supports local decision-making authority and opposes legislation that removes the ability for local elected officials to respond to the needs of their businesses and constituents. Those words are exactly what was in the resolution that are being proposed, or being substituted.
Any discussion on Councilmember Krogman's proposal to change Resolution R 28-010? If not, then go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, with the understanding that that substitution's been made.
That is correct, with the substitution, and I believe our city clerk has a copy of the substitution.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move into the portion that we call public comment. We have the rules listed up here. If you wish to participate in public comment, you must sign up prior to the commencement of the meeting. Negative remarks about city staff or employees are not allowed. You'll have a time limit of five minutes to comment. The total public comment period shall be 30 minutes for non-agenda items and 30 minutes per agenda items. Disruptive or disorderly behavior will not be tolerated. With that, who's our first person up that would like to go ahead and address the city council?
Mayor Hag, if I may, I believe all of these are in conjunction with agenda items that are on the agenda.
Okay.
So, what that means is I will present about the item, and then we'll have public comment about the item, and then city council can discuss the item. So, it looks like there are no general comments, so we will proceed with...
To be clear from our public, we have anybody with just general comments, or they're all specific to a particular agenda item? Okay, well then we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. We'll move on to our regular agenda. First item on the agenda is seven alpha, which is our stormwater utility discussion.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, there has been a lot of talk about stormwater utilities as of late. The city council recently adopted an ordinance in November of '27 that took effect in January of 2018. We fully rolled out all of the billing as of March of 2018. There have been residents that have received standalone invoices, things like that, so there have been a few more comments about the stormwater utility. And this item has come in conjunction with one in particular resident that came in and discussed it with myself. The mayor requested that we have this discussion on how we would like to proceed. But just in general, some comments that I've received from residents in La Sure is about large, single-family lots. So, if you have a large, single-family lot that's larger than five acres, you are charged stormwater utility fee monthly of $35 because of the size of it. Some communities have a set stormwater utility for single-family homes, so it ties it a little bit to zoning. With us, that would be tied to residential zoning, would have a flat fee, and then we could develop it in different manners. Another resident came in and discussed vacant land and development. So, we have a couple developments, Turrell Estates, and we also have Cedar Ridge Trails. There are some vacant lots there. The request is, you know, they're marketing, trying to sell these lots. They've invested some dollars into local infrastructure for stormwater. The request was to have something in the ordinance addressing those vacant lots and developments. The third comment that I received, land located within the corporate limits but not connected to any infrastructure. Now, this is kind of what I would call orphaned properties. You know, the corporate limits have annexed these properties in, but they aren't connected to any infrastructure. They're largely wooded lots, things of that nature. There's ways to handle that specifically. If we do, with any of these options or changes that are made, it's very important that we have very well-defined criteria and metrics for reducing rates or having a property be exempt. And this would be one that I think we could have a discussion about for future ordinance update to look at how many parcels are in this, fall in this criteria, and what we want to do with them. And the other comment received from residents is industrial and commercial rate structure. So, right now, the way that we have our system set up is it's strictly dependent on parcel size. This has been determined to be equitable within the community. Basically, the equity tie is if you have a large parcel, you pay more for stormwater. Now, other communities have used models where industrial and commercial rates are much higher than residential rates because, in general, those commercial and residential properties have more impervious surface and contribute to the city's stormwater infrastructure at a higher rate. So, those are the basic comments that I've received from residents. So, basically, I've outlined a few options as far as what we can do and how to proceed. So, we can choose to keep the stormwater utility as-is. Another option would be to charge a flat fee for all residentially zoned properties. St. Peter does this. I believe New Prague, Montgomery also do this. And then what they use is the tiered structure like we have for commercial and industrial properties. So, that's the other thing. Use a tiered structure to address industrial, commercial, zone properties. We could develop a policy for vacant, single-family home lots, develop a policy for large parcels that are not adjacent to public infrastructure, or some combination of any of these options. And there's probably other options out there that we could look at. Personnel and budget committee throughout 2017 looked at various options. What we came up with was what was adopted at city council. Now, it's in ordinance. Every time somebody comes in and has a comment about our stormwater ordinance, it's, my comment back is it's out of my control to have discretion regarding these rates. They're adopted, they're in ordinance, they're the law of the land. So, in order for us to change these, we have to change the ordinance itself. So, timelines. So, there's a few different timelines that we could go down. So, we could incorporate any changes that city council, if they do choose, if you choose to make changes to the stormwater ordinance, look at those and evaluate the different structures, come up with something a little different in conjunction with the 2019 budget formation process, which I believe everybody's aware starts around June. And that would go into effect January 1st, 2019. Another option would be to change the ordinance prior to the budget process effective as soon as we possibly can get it done. So, there is a process. Any ordinance changes, we have to publish, we have to have two readings for. So, that process alone takes about a month. Or, the other option, leave as-is and reevaluate as needed. So, I think the comments that I've received from residents, they do have warrant. I think we should look at it. From my opinion, it would be, you know, do we want to start working on this immediately at a staff level, or is this something we want to move forward with, in conjunction with the 2019 budget process? So, with that, I believe we do have two commenters about the stormwater utility. First one is Mr. John Schultz.
Welcome, Mr. Schultz, and please go ahead and take your time to go ahead and do what you need to do regarding...
I know I see a 30-minute time limit, and I'm only going to ask for two hours, okay? No, I think I can get done with 10 minutes, and if there's just two of us, I guess just me and Art. So, we'll be well within the 30 minutes. I think Jasper has given you a good introduction to some ideas. You know, I really didn't know a darn thing about the stormwater utility fee until in January I was notified that there was going to be a stormwater utility fee. And it was part of the notice, I was invited to call the city and ask questions, so I did. I called, and I happened to get Randy. And I said, Randy, looking at the formula of what am I going to pay per month? He thought, well, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's about $12 a month for you. Okay, that was the beginning. So, then I got my bill, it was $35. And I looked at that, and that got my attention because that would come out to $420 a year. And if you take my current tax load to the city, and I know this is a fee, it's not a tax, but it's still a cost of me living in a city, it would increase my basic tax load, fee load, call it what you will, by 27%. It just seemed that that was shocking, that I could get a bill in the mail that was raising my basic taxes by 27%. Anyway, so I started doing more research on it, and then I also looked at it that under the formula the city's using, I'd be paying over $100 a quarter, and somebody with the same amount of runoff than me would be paying about $20. And so, that didn't make any sense. And when I first started thinking about it, it seemed to me you would judge runoff partly or mostly based on impervious surface on your lot. And that is pretty much held up as I've done my research. And so, even though I have a seven-acre lot, I have no more roof space than somebody in town that has a third of an acre lot has the same amount of roof space, about 1,700 square feet. So, even though we have the same amount of runoff, I'm going to be paying seven times more for the same amount of runoff, if you would follow my thinking on that. And that got me a little bit more concerned. And so, I started doing a little research into the law to see the basis of the city's authority to do this, and certainly the city has authority. But the statute, which I know you guys have seen, 4444.075, says that the city can do a stormwater utility fee if they are just inequitable, the charges. I look up equitable, it means equal. Well, if I have the same amount of runoff as the person next to me, I have a seven-acre lot, they have a 1/3 acre lot, they have the same amount of roof space as I do, I'm paying seven times more for the same amount of runoff if we were side by side. Well, and then you lay on top of it that I don't have any storm sewers in my neighborhood, and my lot sincerely is never going to produce stormwater into the city of La Sure. You can come out and walk my property, and you will not see any place where water leaves my property, and you would judge that by, you know, erosion and stuff like that. And even if I had storm sewers and I had a hard-surface road next to my property, that'd be above my property because my property is all below the road level. So, I'm not against contributing to the city because if the city does have a good stormwater utility fee, that adds to my value. I'm willing to pay, I'll pay as much as a person who has the same amount of impervious surface as I do. I have no trouble with that. So, anyways, after I did that, I did some more looking, and... So anyways, after I did that, I did some more looking, and I found out that even though it's common sense and recognized and used very often, the impervious surface on a lot, both Rochester and Duluth have determined that's impractical to do that. And so, they have a flat fee for a residential area. I'll get into that in a little bit. Some cities, and I've seen the policies and I've seen the data, there's one city out in Massachusetts, they actually measure every single lot. They measure its size, and they measure its impervious surface. And they do that either through satellite pictures, or they actually fly an airplane or a drone over, and they take a picture, and then they can measure the surface and all that. But everybody pretty much agrees that's impractical and unnecessary. And so, looking at Jasper's memo to you, he identifies that no consideration was given to outside factors such as infiltration, impervious surfaces, or site runoff due to various reasons. And so, I'm just going to give you a couple pieces of information here, and then I'm just going to highlight what's in this information, if you'll let me, and then I'll be done. This is Duluth, this is Rochester. And so, these highlights are very quick. The Duluth language uses what they call an equivalent residential unit, and they declare that a single-family home on a residential lot is one unit, and they charge six seventy-five dollars for that unit. What you're going to charge is based on, partly on what total amount of money you need to raise, and that's in everybody's policies, that they show how much they need, they divide it out accordingly. And they declare that a equivalent residential unit has seventeen-hundred-and-eight square feet of impervious surface. Now, a city like Champlin, they actually measured everything and came up with a formulas, you know, based on what, they took all these averages. But this is how Duluth does it. So, they, so for a single-family home, they have that flat rate, nothing about lot size. And they give a discounted rate for multi-floor and multi-family structures. So, there you have a residential property again, but instead of being a single unit, you have a multi-floor or multi-family. So then, they take that ERU, and then they discount it accordingly, come up with something. And then, for commercial-industrial, they actually measure the size of the lot, and, oh, excuse me, they measure the amount of the impervious surface, and then they pay one ERU for every seventeen-hundred square feet of impervious surface. So, if a factory had seventeen-hundred square, seventeen thousand of impervious surface, they paid ten times the one rate. Now, going to Rochester, they declare in their policy that it would be impractical to do lot size and impervious amount per lot. They don't want to do the flyovers. They're just declaring it's impractical. And these policies all fit law, by the way. They structure the fee, and they also structure the fee into two parts. Very interesting. They take the cost of the infrastructure, and they're going to spread that out on all the properties, and so that's one part of the fee. So, the structure, the fee is two parts, the cost of the infrastructure, which can vary per lot, and the cost of administration, which is equal per lot. And you'll see on, so, you may have a variable amount for the size of your lot, then you have a fixed amount for the administrative cost, and those two numbers become the fee. Because they say that a lot should only pay based on what you're contributing to the city's system. So, that's one element. But they also say that it costs equal amount to everybody to administer it, so they get a flat administrative fee. Also, you'll notice on the third page subdivision D, or subdivision ten, rather, they declare that a land-use factor incorporates, this is interesting, if you look at that, section ten, they declare the land-use rate incorporates all the variables associated with runoff. Let's see here. Can you read that, Greg? Do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, the term "land-use factor," or LUF, shall mean a number used to integrate the amount of impervious area on a parcel, land-use types and densities, stormwater runoff flow, and colludent loading potential. A parcel-specific land-use factor is extrapolated for each non-residential parcel, and using parcel-specific impervious area measurements, and the LUF parameters contained in Table eight point one of PLAN, and expanded upon in Section seven, seven, A dot zero five, subdivision two.
Anyway, so, what they're doing is, is they're declaring, we're going to come up with what we call a land-use factor, and that includes all these variables. And so, we're not going to declare each variable for each piece of property. We're just declaring this land-use factor covers all that. And then, that covers, that's for residential. Now, residenials have a parcel-specific rate for their commercial-industrial, they actually do some measurements, whatever. And if you go to subdivision sixteen, they say residential is single duplex and townhomes. So, that's how they cover some of your zoning things. And then you go to subdivision seventeen, getting to the total budget, they define a stormwater unit rate is the amount of money needed in dollars per acre per month. And then, that's how they come up with their total, their monthly fee, et cetera. And then you get to subdivision twenty-one, here's an interesting aspect, and I've seen this in more than one city, they declare land undeveloped as less than one percent impervious surface and with established cover. So, if you have any size lot, whether it be five acres or a hundred acres, if there's less than one percent of impervious surface, I happen to have seven-tenths of a percent, I have about seventeen-hundred square feet of impervious surface with seven acres, that comes up with less, that's about seven-tenths of one percent. But they declare that if you have less than one percent impervious surface and you have established land cover, you don't have any runoff. So, once again, you don't even have a fee. You're just put on the hold, and more than one city has that. I think that's really what I wanted to give you, was Rochester and Duluth, and to make the point that the rate is currently structured, you could have the same amount of impervious surface that I have on a lot that is a half an acre. You could have my seven acres, we could be right across the street from City Hall. We'd have the same gradient, the same grading, but with my seventeen-hundred square feet of roof and that person's seventeen-hundred square feet of roof, all my land has plantings on it, et cetera, like mine does, technically, I have no more runoff than the person next to me. And even though it appears I have this greater area, the fact is, with no impervious cover, I don't have the runoff, because that's really what defines runoff, is impervious cover. So, but once again, what I'm trying to make the point is, is that most of the cities legally say, "We're not going to measure impervious. We're going to declare all residential lots same, same." And that's what I encourage the city to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Is there anybody else that's going to be addressing regarding this particular subject for stormwater utility discussion?
We do have Mr. Art Straub also signed up, if he would like to comment at this time.
Mr. Straub.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. My name is Art Straub, and I'm your farthest neighbor from the city of La Sueur. I am far to the north. Fifty-five years ago, my father was dying of heart disease, asked if I would buy sixty acres of the property that goes back to eighteen fifty-four and preserve it in the family, which I did. And so, we have, part of our land is in the city of La Sueur, but we have sixty acres that borders you. In a picture in your mind, St. Anne Cemetery, Dopey Lane, then you take a left in your D-1 trail, there are two homes that are, nice homes that are on that trail, and you reach a cul-de-sac above the second home, and that's where the road ends. For the last fifty-five years, we have maintained that road in the city of La Sueur. We discovered, and looking at the map today, that the road goes through property that has never been called a road. And so, it could probably be addressed by taking one of you down and walking, as I did today. The land is undeveloped. We have a trailer that dropped down by helicopter about forty years ago. Where it came from, we're not sure, but it's there. And today, at three o'clock this afternoon, the water was within four feet of the door, and we're used to that. But I think that would explain why we're in the floodplain, and that would be not subject to the attacks. So, I would like to invite one of you, all of you, whatever, to take the trip with me, spend an hour and a half in a very pleasant part of the woods, but I think we can more succinctly explain our situation. Now, if you need the four-hundred-and-twenty dollars, we'll dig it up and donate it to you, but we're not getting electricity or road. We finally have telephone called cell, but otherwise, we're kind of a primitive group, okay? To show you how primitive, some people have to go to the bathroom when they go down there, and so, we had a little biffy this size in the woods, and so, someone came along and said, "You've got to get a door on that," and then they donated a little bit bigger building, but even that is falling down. So, any one of you, especially the young lady over here, you're specially invited to take the walk. It will get you home safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Straub. Anybody else regarding stormwater policy? Okay. So, do we want to make any changes? Was desired timeline for any changes? If changes are desired, should the P and B committee develop those changes and recommend them to the City Council? I'm open for input.
I'll take my turn.
Anybody?
I had concerns originally when it came, it was first brought out, that a person that had a one-acre lot was going to be charged the same as a person with a five-acre lot, and there were aspects that were in there that weren't fair as it went. It does need to be fair.
Any other comments?
Well, I think we've gotten some feedback on what we put together, and I would recommend that our Personnel and Budget Committee take a relook at it, pending recommendations from our city administrator, who has been getting directly the feedback and can use some professional expertise to make some sense out of this. But I think we need to respond to the concerns and see if there's a more equitable, fair way of doing this, and I think that should start with Jasper and our Personnel and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. How about Councilmember Huntington?
Well, I agree, yeah. I think we always have to be fair in this whole situation, so if you guys are willing to do the Personnel and Budget and bring it back to us, that's fine with me.
Councilmember Krogman.
I would agree. I think we need to look more at this, but I want to add one other thing, and that was the question that was raised by Jasper earlier about when. It strikes me, if we can make this better, we should do it as soon as possible and not wait until the next fiscal year. I don't know what the economic impact is. I want to look at that, I want to look at the whole overall picture, but I do understand what the citizens are saying, and I think we have to listen.
I would like to go ahead and ask for a motion then, that we turn this over to the Personnel and Budget Committee for further investigation and a full recommendation to City Council.
Question.
Please.
Are we connecting a timeline to this consideration then, or not? Or is that a separate?
I think we're going to have to discuss that in the P and B. Quite honestly, I think we're going to have to look at the financial impact for 2018 and probably go from there. Would that be a wise assumption, or city administrator?
Yeah, so I can, I'll reach out to the Personnel and Budget Committee, get a meeting on the schedule, and we'll add this to the agenda, and we'll develop it. You know, Mr. Schultz has some great ideas. One thing, one thing that those communities have are dedicated staff to stormwater. So, Personnel and Budget Committee, if we remember, we were trying to do it for as inexpensive as possible without adding overhead. Now, we can do some of these things, and I can look into it. We don't have a stormwater technician, but we do have an engineer that we could, we could see how much it would cost to do some of these annual analyses or specific analyses of industrial or commercial buildings, and look at that too, because, you know, I think in general, it is, it would be better to add more parameters that look at multiple things going on in a parcel. But when we discussed that Personnel and Budget at City Council, we also wanted to keep the overhead down. So, we can look at it, and I can get some numbers to look at that, but I think that's a perfectly fine scenario. We'll get this on the agenda for Personnel and Budget, and then go from there, and it'll take as long as it takes to develop something we feel comfortable with.
In some of that, wouldn't the building official be part of that?
Conversation.
Yeah, because when I was building up in the cities, I had to give a plan and show what the, what the surface counts were going to be, and whether or not it was going to fit in those areas, and so on and so forth, and that was approved by a building official.
Yeah, our building official could weigh in. Other communities have stormwater ordinances that make any new developments, basically control a certain amount of rain on their property. So, it's like, you have to design your runoff or your grading plan to the hundred-year rain event. We don't have an ordinance of that nature, but I think it'd be good to get Justin involved with this type of thing, because he's going to be out in the public, and any sort of land-use change on a commercial-industrial property, he'd be the first to see it through the building permit process. So, I think it'd be a good addition to the team.
I think it's worth restating what the purpose of this stormwater fee was, and it was, it's a fund all its own, or a capital improvement item all its own, trying to be proactive with the 112 Turnback Project and the costs of a lot of storm sewer activity there, right? So, it's not, it's not like it's in our general fund budget and has a direct impact on operations at this point.
Correct. So, the initial drive for this is the 112 Turnback Project, and the need to have dollars allocated for the stormwater portion of that project. So, Personnel and Budget, we talked about either establishing a stormwater utility fee or incorporating this into the general levy, which is the current mechanism that pays for stormwater improvements, maintenance, things like that at the moment. The direction was to go with the stormwater utility fee, and that's why the stormwater, any stormwater changes won't affect the levy moving forward. So, I think we can come up with a better, more robust way to look at things. You know, I really like the Duluth model. I think that's something that we could implement here with a few tweaks, but yeah, I think, I think, you know, in general, we want to, we want to make sure that we have funding to do projects that are necessary.
And to be clear, we just want to make sure that, Mr. Straub, thank you for your story about the history of La Sueur, especially that part of La Sueur. And Mr. Schultz, thank you for all the research that you've put forth towards this project. I know you've done yeoman's work dry together. I know you've done yeoman's work trying to gather all this information, so thank you.
I like the minimal design, too.
And we, and we will go ahead and bring it to the Personnel Budget, and we'll be able to go ahead and get it to the full city council. Thank you. We'll now move on to line item seven, Bravo.
Did you get your motion in seconds?
I don't think we need a motion in a second. Seven Bravo, Utility Task Force, UTV Ordinance, second reading.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, uh, before you, uh, it looks like I need to put that to be the second reading, is the second reading of the UTV ordinance. Um, essentially, we had the first reading on the ninth, uh, with no comments or, or changes to the actual ordinance. Uh, the proposal is to have a twenty-five-dollar annual fee, um, and that this could potentially go into effect on May first if approved tonight. So the, the twenty-five-dollar annual fee will go towards the, the printing of the stickers, the administrative fees for, um, taking the applications, making sure that they have insurance, and then the enforcement of the, the ordinance itself. Uh, this is something that we'll incorporate into the governmental fee schedule annually, so we can look at it. If we're completely off-base with what our estimates are, we can adjust that during the, the twenty-nineteen budget approval process. Um, worked with the, the police chief, Bruce Kelly, city attorney, Todd Coriel on this. Uh, I think it's a pretty solid ordinance. Um, I haven't received any comments from the public, other than they're very excited. Uh, we've actually had a few people come in trying to apply for permits already, um, and we said, "Just, just hold on a little bit. We still need to go through the process." Um, but yeah, I think it'll be, uh, an interesting thing. We're going to keep an eye on it, and I'll, uh, I'll try to get reports from the police chief to, to make sure you're aware of any issues or, or comments that we receive from the public. So, um, with that, we're, we're looking to, uh, city council to evaluate this. Uh, you could waive the, the second reading of the UTV ordinance and then implement, implement, or direct staff to implement it as soon as possible. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have about the UTV ordinance, second reading.
I, I have a question. It seems to me we should also approve the annual permit cost, at least for, for now, we've got to get it into effect, do we not?
Yeah, you, yeah, that is a...
If we pass it.
Yep, formally, yes.
I have just one question. In light of our, our, uh, previous hour and a half, two-hour, uh, focus on economic development, is this an, would this be considered an urban amenity that would draw people into our community? That's not a, not a real serious question, but...
I, I mean, you could. I mean, it might be, you might get some people that are excited, um, you know, there might be a, uh, it might spur some economic development if people start buying these side-by-sides in the community, or you might see, you know, more popping up or a dealership that offers them or something of that nature, but yeah.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion then for the waiving of the second reading and to go ahead and approve the annual permit fee of twenty-five dollars for UTVs.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. We now move on to line item seven, Charlie, which is the Henry Estates Final Plat. And with that, I'd like to welcome our Community Development Director Samantha DiMaggio.
Good evening. Thanks for having me this evening. This evening, you're asked to consider, this would actually be the final plat. I, taking the lead of Jasper, apparently did a great job updating my slides as well. So the final plat of a property that's approximately nine acres, the property owner is requesting that we bring that down into three separate parcels or three separate lots. It's currently zoned R1, low-density residential. The zoning for that, those lots requires it be a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet with at least a hundred feet wide. The applicant, the three lots that they would like to create, one would be two-point-one-four acres, the second lot would be two-point-four-six acres, and the third lot would be three-point-seven-two acres. All lots meet our minimum requirements for the R1 district. And prior to plating, unfortunately, on the maps that we got, they actually showed, um, the interior lines, they showed them to be, I believe, twenty feet in width, and they only need to be fifteen. So Mr. Farr, the applicant, is actually having the maps updated now. Once he gets the final maps, he will plat them with those. Along with that, I did have one modification to the resolution that I gave you, so you have updated resolutions on your table. If you look at page two, it, um, should read, instead of a minor subdivision, it should read a final plat. I apologize for that. So this is the final plat that you'd be approving this evening. I don't know if you have any questions of staff?
Exactly, is that Samantha?
It's right off of Dopey Lane.
No, no, I'm, I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm on page two.
Yep, page two, it says, "Now therefore be it resolved by the city council."
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the name?
Do you have any other questions of me?
I learned something rather interesting when doing some research on this. I learned about this park dedication. Perhaps you could maybe explain that to others on city council that may not be aware, as I was not prior to today.
So we do have a park dedication fee that we charge for residential lots and for commercial lots. Some of them have already been paid, or at the time of plating, typically is when the park dedication fees are paid. Sometimes we have them paid when they come in for a building permit. It just depends on where people are at, and so that, those funds go into a fund that helps build our, build our parks. So I think people often wonder, how do parks get built? They actually get built through the development of housing and through commercial properties. Oftentimes, commercial businesses say, "Well, why does that matter to me?" But as we all know, that when commercial businesses need workers, those workers look for those amenities that communities have. So it's very important that we have parks to try to recruit workers, families to come to town to work at these businesses.
So I'll, I'll ask kind of a leading question that I already know the answer to, but we don't see many developments here in town. This is a, this is a final plat. This is the first one that we've done since I've been here. Uh, but typically, a property like this, I know that there's been improvements done on Dopey Lane as far as sewer and water. Uh, there's sometimes deferred assessments on this. Sam, do you know if the, there are any deferred assessments, or if they've been paid up front, or...
Mr. Farr actually paid those all up front, and so he's going to put those in the cost of the people who are acquiring the land from him. He made that decision not to finance it. Sometimes the property owners will choose to finance it over a long period of time. They do have to pay an interest rate with that. Mr. Farr, being a local banker in town, decided to pay those up front and not pay any accrued interest on it. So all of those have been paid. It's nice that there is sewer and water in that road. As those new lots are developed, they'll be able to connect each on their own into Dopey Lane, and so this is actually a great location for anyone looking to build.
And to be clear, we've run everything through the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, sir, we have.
Okay. I knew that, but it's want to be clear. Any other questions for Samantha? So, you have motion then to go ahead and approve the plat with the following conditions, and they're all stated here. The applicant shall meet all the requirements of the city attorney regarding recording title and recording procedures. Connections to the city sewer and water system are required. Utility plans shall be prepared for each lot prior to the issuance of a building permit. Eastmans shall be placed on the plat consistent with the requirements of section one-fifty-two-dot-zero-six-nine. Park dedication shall be paid consistent with the requirement of one-fifty-three-dot-three-twenty. The applicant shall record the final plat with the county recorder within sixty days, and the applicant shall submit to the city clerk a reproducible print of the final plat showing evidence of the recording within thirty days of recording. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion?
I should have asked this before. I'm just curious, this, these are large lots, obviously. What's the rationale or the, um, is it good for our community to have a certain percentage of large lots like this, or what's our, and this, this was planned a long time ago, these, what's the, what's the future of large lots when we're looking at housing?
Yeah, I, I can answer that, and I can dr, address it. Um, you know, we have our various different areas that are zoned in different, different zoning codes for the city. This is R1. These are the large lots. We don't have another area that has large lots like this. So it's kind of a, a dying thing, um, unless we, we annex some land and, and then designate it as R1. There are some other areas around town, but I don't believe there are areas that have a development potential like this. In general, cities want to have smaller lots because there's more homes and there's more tax base. So you might hear, if you remember back to the retreat, um, Brad, who was giving the presentation, said Shakopee, um, adopted a policy, uh, on lot size, and that was because they have a, a cost analysis that looked at any, any lot larger than point-five acres in Shakopee actually cost the city of Shakopee more money. Now, that's a little bit different situation up there as, than it is here. Um, I think, I think there's a, there's a market niche, um, for lots like this, and, uh, they do cost more to develop, you do pay more for them, but they're, they're difficult to find a two-and-a-half to three-and-a-half acre lot that you can hook up to city utilities on. So for some people, that might be something that they're looking for. Um, I'm curious, and I'll follow, how quickly these lots sell, um, and that might drive other development in town as well. If they, if they do sell fast, um, and houses are built on them, I could see that getting the attention of other developers that might have, um, areas in mind. So it's, some communities don't necessarily, um, facilitate these large lot parcels. Uh, this is an existing zoning area of R, R1, uh, so it makes sense, and I'm curious to see what, what happens and how fast they sell, if they sell in a, in a quick manner.
What a difficult problem it's going to be for the city of La Sourd, should we run into a situation where we have, uh, these sell rather quickly, and we have to start thinking about annexation in the future. Any other questions? So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move into line item seven, Delta, which is our Parks Department mower purchase.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, uh, before you is an item, uh, that has been identified in our CIP that was adopted, uh, with the twenty-eighteen budget. Now, the, the mower that has been identified by staff that is recommended for replacement isn't slated to be replaced until, uh, twenty-nineteen. Uh, this is a two-thousand-eight club, uh, Cub Cadet mower. Uh, there's some estimated, estimated repairs on the mower to be around fifteen-hundred dollars. The quotes that we've received from UFC follow the purchasing policy that has been adopted as they are state bid, bid prices. So, um, anything over ten thousand dollars, you typically need two quotes unless it's on the state bid, uh, cooperative, cooperative purchasing venture. So we do have funds available in the twenty-eighteen budget, uh, from the CIP associated with the recreational software, um, purchase, uh, that we, that we made. Basically, we, we budgeted enough money to potentially purchase brand-new software, but what we ended up doing is we upgraded our current software. So there was a, there's significant cost savings, uh, but just for, uh, the process of evaluating that software and making sure we got a piece of software that really fit our need, we budgeted for the full amount. So there is, um, there, there's the mower. It's a zero-turn sixty-inch mower. Um, that's, that's basically, we, we can afford it, we can build it into our CIP this year. It would then be removed from our capital improvement plan for twenty-nineteen. Um, there are additional quotes that have been included in the packet for some accessories as well, um, like a bagger, a vac, vacuum system, and then a, um, turf stripping kit, correct? Um, and those items will be incorporated into the, the, uh, general budget, um, if needed, if we can, if we can get the, the budget dollars within the CIP, um, after all of the build-out costs for the, the recreational software, because there will be some additional hardware, point-of-sale, um, type things that are needed above the thirty-seven-fifty, which we paid for the rec software. So we'll, uh, we'll do some numbers, but with the, um, with the weather right now and the greening of the, um, the grass, we're going to be cutting grass here in a couple weeks, uh, minimum. So, uh, basically, we're going to city council, asking their opinion on this, um, as far as if we want to move forward with this kind of expedited purchase of this mower to replace, uh, a piece of aging equipment. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain any questions the city council may have.
I do have a question. I want to be clear. We're talking here about only the purchase of the main piece of equipment, and the so-called, what I'll call accessories, would be deferred? Is that correct?
It, it could be. So the direction could be to purchase the main piece of equipment, and then if the budget works, if, if the, uh, if there is budget dollars available to purchase the other equipment. Now, um, either way, we would try to purchase those accessory equipment because they're, they're necessary, um, to do some of the work that the, that the Cub Cadet did. Um, but we would, we would either use, uh, CIP dollars that are available or existing, um, like maintenance dollars that are in the park budget.
We're going to, if we don't approve it, you're going to spend fifteen-hundred dollars approximately, right?
Yeah, correct. And, um, looking at it, uh, the, if, if it is approved, uh, we're requesting that, um, the, the two-thousand-eight Cub Cadet is also declared surplus. Um, and talking to, uh, Lain Wilbright and Tom Gerlick about this, I, I don't think we'll get that much. So we have basically fifteen-hundred dollars in repairs for a item that's worth a thousand dollars. Um, so that, that's kind of what's, uh, pushing this along.
How many hours are on that old machine?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I would, you know, it's ten years old, so nine years old is primary. So, yeah, I would say a lot of hours.
I've gone through two. I'm on my third lawnmower in, in ten years. I mean, the fact that you're running the thing for ten years and it even has a value is, you know, look, you need the tools to do the job right, and we want our parks to look right. It's not like anybody's going to go out there with a freaking push mower. You need the tool to be able to do it. And then it's got to be the right tool to get the job done quickly, so you can move on to the next one that's going to have to get done. And, I'll make a motion by.
Then, and to be clear, just to make sure I understand, the fifteen-thousand dollars that we have left over from what we're not spending on the software, uh, purchase and being able to just upgrade that software, and the anticipated thousand, thousand dollars that we'd be able to receive as far as the, uh, surplus of this mower, uh, we feel rather confident then that, uh, that's going to be sufficient to go ahead and cover the cost and the accessories, or do we have some room to perhaps get the accessories this year, or is that something we have to put off?
I, I, I'm confident we'll be able to do it. Uh, there's, there's dollars, equipment replacement dollars that are, have been allocated for maintenance-type things like this. Um, we could dip into that if we had to, um, but that takes away from other things that, that may happen this year. Um, but just breaking down what we budgeted, uh, for the software and what this lawnmower and accessories cost, it's about this, awash. It's about twenty thousand dollars for both.
Well, it's another good reason as to why it's so important for communities to have a good CIP and CEP plan, because now we're actually going to be able to take something that's scheduled for twenty-nineteen, put it into the current year, and have some, something else that perhaps we can use that money for moving forward into fiscal year twenty-nineteen. So I believe, Councilmember Favellis, you made a motion. Is there a second to this?
If I may, what's the motion?
Yeah, what, please...
The motion is for the, for the purchase of the equipment, and if you've got the money for buying the accessories that you need or however you're, else you're going to need to work it out.
Okay.
Because you need to have both things. You need to have the accessories and the machine.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? We're actually going to have two motions on this, because we're going to deal with the surplus material after this vote.
No second to original motion.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'm not clear, okay? It, we've got, we've got CIP money, we can purchase the base machine, but then we muddled into this accessory thing, that I started that. I mean, i- is that going to come out of totally separate funding, so it doesn't have to be part of this motion?
I would recommend having it be all part of the, the motion and have it directed, have staff directed to take it out of the CIP dollars. I think that's clear.
Thank you.
So we have about fourteen thousand five hundred between the accessories and the mower itself, and we have about sixteen thousand to work with, so we ought to be able to go ahead and take care of this. So we have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. We'll now go ahead and, uh, entertain a motion then for requesting the two-thousand-and-eight Cub Cadet as surplus property.
I would move we declare that as surplus property.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. That motion is carried.
You again?
I know, I'm like a boomerang.
Just wait, just wait. I've got to get my notes ready. Okay, we're now going to move on to line item seven Echo, which is the minor subdivision for the Plum Run lots.
Thank you, Mayor. This might sound familiar to you because I've actually brought this to you once before. On November 27th, 2017, I had come to you asking that we take all eight lots on Plum Run, combine two lots to make one single-family lot. So we'd take the eight lots and we'd go down to four single-family lots. Since that time, the EDA has put these lots for sale. The developer that has them under contract has stipulated that he wants to keep lots five, six, seven, and eight as twin home lots and only combine lots one and two and lots three and four. This had originally gone to the Planning Commission prior to coming to you where they had agreed to combine them all. I have not brought this back to the Planning Commission. I just decided to come directly to you because we're not lessening, I'm not adding anything to it, I'm actually kind of retro, going back to what some of it was. So I didn't think that was necessary, but I wanted to clear up the resolution. So I've given you a resolution. If you look on page one, the fifth whereas clears up that we had adopted this minor's, yeah, it would have been a minor subdivision on November 27th, and that we're actually rescinding that resolution, which is Resolution 17-122. And I'm asking you to pass a new resolution. So in the new resolution, only lots one and two will be combined and lots three and four. The other lots will remain the same. It's up to you, if you feel that it's important that the Planning Commission see this, I'd be happy to bring it back to them. But as I said, as we're actually going, keeping it what a lot of it was, I just didn't feel that that was necessary. I'd like to move forward and close on these lots as now it actually, spring has sprung, and I would like to have the developers start moving on them.
Does anybody feel that we need to take this back to the Planning Commissioner? Do we have enough information that our community development director has given us to make the modification for the Plum Run lots?
I think we're just trying to be responsive to what's the developer and people want, right?
Exactly. And I think at the time, we had heard that people wanted just the single-family homes. And as we found a developer, a local developer, he has, he believes that there is still the market for the twin homes. And so he's going to continue those. So the twin homes will remain adjacent to the twin homes that are already there, and then there'll be two single-family homes on the end.
I have a small amount of concern with this because we're going back and forth what a developer wants to do, and we should be determining what we want to do with the property based on advice. And so it's a little bit awkward what we're doing. I don't like rescinding what we've done to meet a developer's needs. That should have been forecasted, but I'm willing to go along with it. I am concerned about the resolution because the resolution doesn't have the resolution. The resolution incorporates the whereas, and that doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. You don't take a whereas and make it a part of the resolution. The resolution just says we rescinded one, and there's nothing, it just says adopting the foregoing resolution, but there isn't a resolution.
Exactly.
That's an example of what we're going through right now.
That's an excellent point, sir. I've never done one of these before, so this is all new to me, but this is an odd situation.
The whereas where it says, whereas the following legally described properties are proposed to be combined, needs to be part of the resolution, not a part of the whereas. Whereas has no legal effect whatsoever, only the resolution does. So I'm willing to move that by moving that whereas into the resolution. I'm not sure our clerk has been able to follow what I'm saying, but I think it's fairly clear.
I'm unsure with what you're saying. So right down below, it has the legal descriptions of the property that we're going to combine, and it has the maps on page three showing the legals. So I'm missing where your whereas is missing.
Well, the whereas doesn't, not the whereas, the resolution doesn't say to what's, it doesn't say what's right in the middle. Legally described properties are proposed to be combined, and that's a typo, combines. Lot one, et cetera. I don't see in the resolution, unless you say these diagrams are part of it, but they're not identified.
So those are, if you see the first one, it says lot one and two, block three. And, no, I'm sorry, they are small. And then the one next to it says lot three and four, block three.
You're approving the application, which has those legals in those lots. You're splitting hairs in either way, we'll be fine, councilman, but if you want to include the legals in there now, therefore, that's fine.
Well, it should say they're a part of it. It doesn't say that. It doesn't even say there's an Exhibit A in the resolution. There's nothing there that says there's an Exhibit A.
It just says the application to prove that it was submitted, and that's what was in the application. But we can update if it still has those legals, if we're more comfortable with that.
Perhaps in the interest of making sure that everything is legal, we want to make, get everything covered so that it satisfies the requirement. Sounds like there's a chance that it already does, but just to be clear, we might want to, you know, so.
It's fine, it's fine either way.
But it's not something that we have to.
We have to propose the changes, councilman's government suggesting those.
Okay, so this is not something that we have to necessarily wait till bringing it in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in the future, have them approve of the language, and bring it back to City Council, just to be clear, right? City Attorney?
You can do that right now.
Okay, perfect. So.
I don't have a problem with working backwards on the lots because it was EDA that broke all the things apart and put them into a package for a sale. There was one price for this, and then if they wanted to buy the whole thing together, we'd give them a better deal for being able to do that. Now, this guy bought everything. He wants to be able to put those things back together because he's doing exactly what the people that were here before tonight are saying, diversity in different spaces to be able to do. I don't have a problem with working backwards. It was allowed before. We changed it, it's allowed for broken up. Why would it not be allowed for going back?
So can we put together a motion then where we can go ahead and resolve 17.122? We can rescind that. The petitioners should meet all the requirements of the City Attorney regarding recording title and recording procedures. Development on each of the four single-family building sites shall require review by the city engineer to ensure proper grading and utility provision. At the time of any construction on the lots, the Public Works Directive may require removal of the unused utility stubs. And the minor subdivisions shall be recorded within 60 days of the approval unless otherwise extended by the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would simply change number five to say the minor subdivisions as indicated in Exhibit A.
As indicated in Exhibit A. Did we get that, City Clerk?
I got it yet.
With that modification, I would so move, if I may.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we get a second, please?
One sec.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're now going to move on to line item seven, Foxtrot, which is the organizational structure amendment. This is a continuation, if you recall, from our last City Council member, Council meeting on the 9th of April, and we wanted to go ahead and allow the community to have a couple of weeks to go ahead and voice any concerns or questions they may have with that city administrator.
Mayor Hague, members of the City Council, we do have one person signed up for comment, so I will go through the presentation and then we'll have public comment and then embark on discussion amongst yourselves. So I have added a few things, I have gotten some comments, but I'll just basically start over as far as what the driving forces were for the organizational structure update. So part of the 2018 budget, there was a voluntary employee severance program that was offered. We have implemented and approved that at City Council this year. All of the employees that have taken it have expressed that they're grateful. I think even one of them stopped in front of the mayor's house to shake his hand at 6:30 in the morning. So I think it's a good thing for the organization. We also have this other piece, the Community Center Organizational and Funding Analysis Study. That was one of the other components that was taken into consideration when Personnel and Budget Committee evaluated various organizational amendments. One thing that we always try to do is learn from the previous structure, what worked, what didn't, what can we do to enact efficiencies. We want to always have customer service as a priority for our staff to our residents, looking at the structure that has been proposed, adding an additional body at City Hall for individuals to come to and talk about building inspection questions, building permit questions. I think it's something that the community has spoken and I've received feedback on, just the difficulties associated with having a contract building official. And in my opinion, we'll have more effective services with the combinations of two different divisions. So some of the Personnel and Budget Committee goals that were established during the various meetings that we had, it was important to have a zero impact on the general levy. I think originally, we had a little impact and we'd made some changes to make sure that it was a zero impact. It's actually a minus .6 impact on the general levy. There is an impact on the enterprise funds, but that's essentially a pass-through. We can get into those details later. And we wanted to use our knowledge to develop a more efficient structure and enhance the level of service that the city provides to the residents. So I think those are some pretty fair goals.
Mr. City Administrator, it's not .6 impact, it's .6% minus.
Yes, .6%.
Thank you.
So I thought I'd just go through the timeline because the Personnel and Budget Committee did spend a lot of time on this. Dating back to January 17th is when we had the first meeting discussing the Public Services Director versus Assistant City Administrator position. Obviously, we decided on moving forward with the Public Services Director position for various reasons. And we started talking about the employee severance package. On the 14th of February, we started, I updated the PBC on the voluntary employee severance program, and then we went into detail about the Community Center report discussion. On the 21st, a week later, we continued that Community Center report discussion. We talked about what that group felt the best outcome would be for the Community Education Partnership. We looked at the voluntary employee severance program again, and then we started going through what the organizational amendment process would look like, what we need to do to do this, and how do we get to the finish line? And we presented, or I presented, and various staff members came in and talked about this, the various departments that we talked about within the city as far as the changes that were proposed. On the 1st of March, we continued that discussion. We originally tried to get Zach Dowd, Finance Director Consultant, to come in. We ended up having to move that meeting by a day, so he wasn't able to do it, but I presented the financial analysis of the original proposed, original organizational structure. Week later, on the 8th, we got authorized to post that Public Services Director position, which closes on May 1st. If there's anybody out there that you know that wants to apply, spread the word. And then we continued that organizational structure development or discussion. On the 13th was when the Personnel and Budget Committee approved, or recommended the hire of Justin Nielsen as the building official. One thing that came up is what kind of budget projections for revenue would we expect to see in 2019? Now, this was because we were talking about looking at a revenue-neutral organizational structure proposal, and if we would have, basically, the question was, well, what are housing prices doing right now? And if we have a net impact of 0% for the general fund levy, what would that project to as far as additional revenues for the city? Those are positive. I think right now, the preliminary numbers are roughly 4.6% increase in property values, but those numbers do fluctuate with the markets. And then we continued again that organizational structure discussion. On the 29th, so this was the meeting prior to it coming to City Council, we reviewed the job descriptions in detail for the leadership positions and talked about the preliminary scoring that was done. So what the preliminary scoring was, I just want to touch base on this to make sure everybody is clear on it. In 2014, we did a compensation and classification study, which Springstead ran as our consultant, and that's what you'll see as far as every job description that we have has a point total associated with it, and it's dependent on job duties and requirements that are in the job description. So they looked at that with the idea that we were going to do something probably next year as far as another formal comp and class study in conjunction with our pay equity requirements for reporting. So they looked at that at no charge and gave us those preliminary scorings for the job descriptions, and we changed some things at the Personnel and Budget Committee at that time, and we continued that organizational structure discussion. Now, on April 9th, two weeks ago, we presented this to City Council. The item was tabled to give the public more time to provide input to administration. So we had basically two weeks for input to be gathered. I did get some information from Councilmember Huntington regarding the changes, and I've incorporated some of those questions into the report. I received no questions from anybody from the public on the proposed changes, other than one person came in and said, in support of it. But nothing, you know, questions about what we're doing, things like that. So I'll go through this quickly since this is the second time that we have gone through this. If there's anything in particular that you would like me to speak more about, we could go that route. So the Police Department, essentially, we have a vacancy. We're filling that at the moment to replace a sergeant with a police officer. You know, we do lose that knowledge of a veteran employee. He was here for over 19 years, so we lose a lot with that. But overall, I think we have a good leadership team in the Police Department that can help train and get a new officer up to speed quickly. So, and this was, this actually was supposed to be the slide before, but, so, one question that came up was comparable cities. You know, what are we comparing our organizational structure to, and how do we get there? And what do we, how do we look at what's comparable for La Sure? And I think we've had numerous studies that say it's dang hard to compare La Sure with anybody because we're a city of 4,000 people, but we have these other amenities that really drive up our budget, our overall budget that we have and what we offer. We have an electric utility, we have a community center. Now, that's almost unheard of in most communities around the state of 4,000 people. So when comparing cities, I like to use the Springstead survey tool that we have access to, and I like looking at the budget numbers for various cities. And what I do is I just do a plus and minus 10% on what their existing budget is for the year. La Sure's budget, and we're going through our audit right now to see what actual revenues and expenses were in 2017, but it's projected in 2018 that the La Sure budget, all the monies coming in through our electric utilities and water and wastewater and general fund levy, all of those items will total up to around $21 million in 2018. So with that 10% range, it looks at basically 18, just under 19 million to just over 23 million. So when looking at the comparable cities, it's, there aren't many out there. There's a lot of counties that have budgets similar to ours, and there aren't many cities in our area other than Wasika that are similar in size, and they're even, they're a little bit larger than us, as you can see. So when looking at these various things, that's kind of what I look at for comparable cities. You know, it's, La Sure is unique, and that's simply as I can put it. We have a lot of things going on here. Looking at strictly population is not, in my opinion, the best way to go about it because you could have a city of 4,000 people that don't have an electric utility and don't have all these other amenities that we have, and they just strictly have administration, water, sewer, things like that. So that's kind of my rationale for looking at comparable cities. I just wanted to make sure that that was known to City Council. So back to the Police Department. This is the financial analysis of this. We're keeping the FTEs the same. Replacing a sergeant with an officer has roughly $18,589 savings annually for this. Now, there is going to be some additional trainings and things like that that do cost money, but over. But over time, you know, the, we'll, we'll see these savings continue to accumulate for the Police Department, which is a general fund, um, general fund department. So looking at the structure, this is the current structure of the Police Department. You'll see two sergeants and four officers. The proposed structure is one sergeant and five officers. Now, the Police Chief is a directly report, or directly supervises two people. And the sergeant has direct supervision to five. Are there any questions about the Police Department? Okay, I'll move on to the proposed HR Communications Department. So we're obviously combining some existing features with some new ideas. That new idea being human resources. And one thing that has done, has occurred in the past is the City Administrator has taken on those human resource tasks. Now, later on in this presentation, I'll talk about some things that we've caught as a, as a team that could have had potentially bad outcomes for the city that I think an HR person would definitely, definitely help as far as monitoring. So the department also proposes repurposing an administrative position to be up at City Hall for building, the building inspection program and the City Clerk Administrative Work. So that would be that additional person up at City Hall to help with residents coming in that may have questions about building permits, things of that nature. So the transition from the current position of Communications Director, City Clerk incorporates a series of training, professional development, continuing educations that roll out should be roughly twelve to eighteen months to fully complete. So this isn't something that, um, that the impact will be felt right away. But it, there is, there is a plan, there's an implementation plan for this. So adding this HR component now will address liability issues that have been identified on various personnel practices. It'll add a level of oversight for personnel-related items and in general, I think, elevate the customer service the city provides to citizens and employees. So, you know, we re, we receive data requests, City Clerk handles that. But the, there's, the HR component of that can also be incorporated into into data requests to make sure that we're following that statute. Some past city practices, I think that everybody's aware of, possibly, that that we're now implementing because of some things that have been identified. Tracking seasonal and part-time shifts, now state statute dictates how many shifts somebody can work if they're determined a seasonal employee or if they're in a part-time employee, things like that, from my knowledge, haven't been tracked. We're now doing that, hiring best, or following best practice, best practices for seasonal employee hirings. One thing that I know that Parks and Rec Director Lane Wilbright is not too excited about or wasn't too excited about was state statute, the League of Minnesota City says that, well, if you're under eighteen years old, you can only operate a vehicle if you receive an exemption from the Department of Labor and Industry. Now, we had an issue last summer where we had a piece of equipment fail and that person just so happened to be under eighteen years old. Now, nothing happened there, we looked at it, we've addressed it, and we're making changes. But things like that, part-time employees working between thirty and forty hours and not receiving benefits. We had one individual like that that we identified, and now that individual is a, is a full-time, um, full-time, uh, maintenance worker. Or Parks Laborer, actually. So things like that have been identified and and we're, we're looking at it. But in general, adding that additional level, in my opinion, is is something that that we should do and we have an opportunity to do here.
I don't know if it's still the same, but the laws were, uh, back in my building days, you couldn't even have an employee under the age of eighteen running power tools.
That, that is, that still is correct. So there essentially, if you're under eighteen and you do not have an exemption, you can use a, a weed whip or a po- push mower. That's it.
And even then, the, the liabilities for insurance is higher.
It could be, yeah, it is. So the financial analysis of this, so yeah, the the director position would be moving from a grade twelve to a grade sixteen. And that's based on that point analysis of the job description. So adding that HR component, adding some additional requirements has triggered that. I believe the original, original job points was three hundred sixty-five, and this has gone up to five hundred fifty-five, which puts it at a grade sixteen based on the current point structure. Overall, department cost is decreasing due to the retirement of the the Special Programs Director, which is on May thirty first of this year. So if you look at this, current FTE is four, we're going to go to three point five if approved. You look at the salaries, there's roughly a little under thirty thousand dollar savings with this scenario. You look at the current structure and then the the new structure, it gets rid of that Special Programs Director, which is kind of, which was kind of floating around and doing a lot of different things. So is, are there any questions about the HR Communications Department proposed structure? All right, I'll move on to the Community Development Department. So this is, I think, our smallest department right now. It was one person, now it's two pers, two people. And then we're adding proposed, uh, building permit tech. So that person that's looking at building inspection permits, working with the new software that we purchased, things of that nature. So looking at this, this was another one that we had evaluated. The current Community Development Director position is a grade sixteen, the proposal is to move that to a seventeen. Now, that would be a lateral move. That would just be basically adding a few, two steps onto that career development arc based on where that position is right now as a, as a grade sixteen.
And the main reason behind that one is because of the direct reports now.
Yep, so the previous, um, previous analysis, there were no direct reports, now there's one and a half. So that, that's an easy one to tie it to. So looking at this, the financial analysis, there are some additional costs to this, but we are adding half a position. That additional cost is just under twenty four thousand dollars annually. That cost, I believe, is warranted because of just the necessity of having an admin-type person working directly with the public and processing building permits. So the current structure that we have, this is twenty eighteen structure. And then the proposed structure with that halftime FTE Admin Assistant Building Permit Tech, whatever we end up calling it. Are there any questions about Community Development Department? All right, I will move on to kind of a rebranding of our Parks and Rec Department. The proposal is to call it the Recreation and Community Education Department, just because self-explanatory. It houses our rec and it houses the Community Edu- Education Partnership we have with the Independent School District. So what this would do is it removes the Parks Division from the Rec Department. It adds one full-time employee, a Recreation and Community Education Coordinator that would focus heavily on programming efficiencies, facility planning. Well, actually, the, the, the director position would focus heavily on programming efficiency, uh, facility planning, leadership components, things of that nature. The coordinator position would be the person on the ground doing a lot of the, um, the scheduling, the visiting ball fields, things like that, getting out, really getting involved. The, the director position would be realigned to be more of a, a, a planning position to look at the facility. I think that was one thing that came from the, the facility report, is that we can do some work with strategic planning. We've, we've done capital, some capital planning, but that's an ongoing thing. It's not something that's done and then you just forget about it, it's, it's continuous. So, and then this position, the, the director position will work in conjunction, conjunction with the newly-formed Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, which we have received three applications for, we're looking for two more if anybody's out there and interested. So once we get those two additional people that, that would like to join that, then that's when that would come to City Council for appointment. And then we can start, uh, start meeting for our PAC. Looking at the financial analysis, I, I recently met with the new Superintendent, and I thought that meeting went very well. Just laying the groundwork for the contract that is up for negotiation in June. So I think that we'll be able to come to an agreement for that, that term, likely it would be another one-year contract. Looking at the salary costs for adding that new position, in that new position for that coordinator, Recreation and Community Education Coordinator is proposed at sixty one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Now, what this is, is a median of the grade ten, so this would be a grade ten step five. If somebody would come in at a grade ten step one, they would get paid less. So this is just, you know, a median value for the grade that is proposed for this position. So looking at the, uh, current FTEs versus proposed, we're going to go up one FTE and there's that sixty one thousand dollar increase in annual salaries for that additional position. The current, current, uh, this again says Community Development Direct Department, this is the current Parks and Rec Department. You'll see that this has Parks in it, obviously, and the proposed structure removes that and then adds the coordinator position. Are there any questions about the Community Development Department?
Can you just clarify between the current and proposed, those maintenance, how the maintenance of the community center is going to work then?
Yep, so the, the current, we have Parks and Recs, maintenance, Park and Rec Maintenance Workers, and they do a lot of work within the community center. Now, I'm working with, with Lane to look at some options as far as cleaning schedules go. But in the winter, the parks essentially shut down. We do have outdoor rinks that need maintenance, but they will continue to do the ice arena maintenance and things like that around the community center. It'll just be housed under a different department and that'll be coordinated with, you know, the two directors working together, the Public Services Director and the, uh, Community or Recreation and Community Education Director. So.
So in effect, are they, under the new structure, those maintenance workers are coming from another department to help, help the, at the community center mainly in the, in the win, mainly in the winter, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you go to the new structure, please? The Recreation and Community Education Director, let's be clear, that is funded half and half, us and the Independent School District?
Correct, it is roughly, it, fifty fifty, yep.
Currently, the Parks Department, even in wintertime, the Parks Department is running a plow, right? And also, uh, maintenance on things too during that time and taking care of the, the ice rings and so on.
Correct, so, um, yes, we do have, so the current maintenance supervisor does run the plow, run a plow during snow events. I think that'll be consolidated just because it'll all be under one umbrella. And the idea is that it, we have these two maintenance workers, if they choose to try and get the proper licensers to operate a plow truck or or some other equipment, then we also have that flexibility. We have run into issues with, with vacation, PTO time during snow events and not having enough people in the street department to do that if, if the timing is just poor. And that's why that maintenance supervisor has stepped in and done some snow plowing. All right, now we'll move on to the Public Services Department. So this is by far the largest department that we have and we'll hopefully be filling that director position soon. The major thing is that we're combining Streets and Parks. So that's that Parks and Rec component, or, yeah, Parks and Rec component, the Parks are moving to Streets. Now, logistically, this, um, I think, there, there will be some challenges, but logistically, I think it will be fairly smooth. The departments are pretty close together, they do have some level of cross-training that currently exists. But having that all under one umbrella, I think, will enhance a lot of, a lot of things that we're trying to do here with our enhancing of our parks and addressing some of our streets needs. There is a new position titled Streets and Parks Manager. Essentially, this is replacing the Street Superintendent position that, uh, that is retiring this year. Or, I shouldn't say retiring, has signed up for the Voluntary Employee Severance Program. There's also a new position titled Merpuck Manager. So this is something that has been vetted through Merpuck. Merpuck is the Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission. The manager would be strictly looking at plant operations. So something that I think the plant needs to some manner. But this has been vetted through Merpuck, they have approved the structure that you guys, that you are evaluating today. Just some of the things that we're proposing to do, adding this position at Merpuck, combining Streets and Parks. It's, in my opinion, that will increase that level of service. I think the scalability of having a Streets and Parks crew that can address needs either in streets or in parks with, with full force is something that I think will fully utilize as a, as a community. If, if there's something that needs to happen in a park, like an event that's occurring, we can focus our, most of our attention on that park to clean it, clean it up and make sure that it's in, um, in proper condition for something like, uh, you know, Winter Fest or something like that. So, and there's, in the structure, you'll see there's increased accountability. It's, it's this director, manager, supervisor, um, structure that's pretty standard. You have a director, you have a manager that manages the division, and then you have supervisors if there's subdivisions out of there. So looking at trying to increase efficiency as well. So financial analysis of this is that there will be a cost reduction of twenty thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars in general, but there will be an increase in the salaries of the water wastewater associated with that Merpuck Manager. So you're looking at all of the Public Services Department here. So this incorporates both enterprise funds and general funds. So in a, in future slide, you'll see the breakdown between general and enterprise. So this is just the, this, the Public Services Department. We're looking at going from twenty-three employees to twenty-two. And that has a, a cost savings of roughly twenty thousand dollars, uh, twenty thousand six hundred dollars.
Can you back up his line?
Yeah.
For the benefit of the citizenry that's here that may not understand what the differences between an enterprise fund and general fund, would you perhaps elaborate?
Yes, uh, enterprise fund is generally described as something we have as a utility. So we have a water fund, we have a wastewater fund, we have a electric fund, and we have a stormwater fund. Those are our four enterprise funds, and all four of those are incorporated in the Public Services Department. Now, we have a street department, which is a general fund funded. So that's why you'll see this, um, overall, these, these slight changes based on how you look at these things. And the idea is to break it down in as many manners as possible to kind of make it as clear to the City Council as far as the impact. Now, the, the utility fund impact, yeah, that has an impact on rates, potentially. But the general fund has a, has an impact on property taxes and what we have to levy for property taxes.
I think, I think that's good to emphasize that the general fund gets money from the levy, the tax levy, property taxes. And the enterprise funds receive their revenues through fees, utility fees.
Correct.
And just so that everybody's clear, including everybody that's out there, understand that the increase in the wastewater treatment facility, the salaries, the twenty one thousand six hundred and one sixty-three, yes, that, that was approved by Merpuck. And keep in mind that, that that money is reimbursed back to the city. Merpuck has, has that built in for what that employee costs. And that was with our budget for two thousand and eighteen, not only was that allotted for, but without having to raise rates on anything, we were right in for, we wanted to have a, a, a zeroed-out budget at the end of the year. That's what they're shooting for.
Correct, yep. Looking at this analysis, move on to the structure. Now, this might be a little difficult to see, if anything, if you get anything from it, it's just, it's a large department. And we, we change up things, we add, add the Parks to the Streets and Parks Manager. So are there any other questions that you have about the Public Services Department? All right, I'll move on to the overall summary. So. this is kind of what I would call, um, we've gotten into the habit of developing these executive summaries that kinda give a, a short summary of, of all the different changes that are associated with something. So, um, full-time employees are proposed to be maintained at forty. Um, the general fund will have an impact of minus point six percent, which translates to roughly nine thousand dollars. The enterprise fund will have a, a two-point-four percent impact, which is twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and most of that is attributed to that hiring of the wastewater, uh, treatment plant manager. Um, add some key staff to the building inspection program and that permit tech, um, the wastewater treatment plant with, uh, uh, the manager position and the rec and community education department with the coordinator position. Um, it also consolidates administrative staff, uh, looking at, um, you know, adding enhanced customer service and some efficiencies. So looking at the departmental analysis, you can see a ta- the table here, looking at the different changes, um, in the budgets, you can see the major increases, the rec and community education department, because we are adding a brand-new position, um, and they, they did not have any retirements. Um, some of the other departments either had retirements and, um, there's some changes in there, so overall, um, looking at all of the impact, um, throughout the city, it'd be a point seven percent increase in salaries. So we're essentially diverting some of the salary savings that we, uh, have realized from the Employee Severance Program, and we're reinvesting those into the Community De- Development Department and the Recreation and Community Education Departments. Um, now there's obviously some internal changes that you see going on there that, um, that's just kind of a generalized statement, um, just by looking at this table. Um, looking at the general fund versus the enterprise fund, now this is where you'll see that minus point-six percent change in the general fund and the two-point-four percent increase in the enterprise fund. Um, and then this is what I've, I've compiled, uh, based on a request, is just to look at some of the salary history numbers, um, going back to twenty sixteen. Now you'll see there's been, back in twenty sixteen, we had thirty-eight FTEs. We've in, we've included, or i- increased it by two to twenty eighteen, those two positions, um, were essentially the, uh, the Parks and Rec Maintenance Worker and the Building Official, so you'll see an increase there. What we're proposing has a slight decrease in what was approved for twenty eighteen, um, and then the twenty nineteen, based on the CPI Midwest, um, which at the time when I did this was at roughly two, projected to be two-point-six-five percent. And CPI is Consumer Price Index, um, for the Midwest region, um, it's a, it's a mechanism or that helps determine what the effect of inflation is in a region. Um, looking at the enterprise fund salary, salary breakdown, history projections, um, going back to twenty sixteen, pretty standard, we had a COLA increase in twenty seventeen, uh, twenty eighteen, same, uh, twenty nine, or twenty eighteen, the proposed reorganization has a two-point-four percent impact, and then again, that CPI, uh, Midwest of two-point-six-five percent.
Back a slide, please?
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure that the public understands that we had a contracted building official in fiscal years twenty sixteen, seventeen, on into this year. And with that contracted building official, it was not somebody that was at our disposal throughout the entire week. So perhaps you can maybe elaborate a little bit about what we're doing now with the permanent hire with our building official.
Yeah, so o- one thing that isn't included in these salary projections are contracts that we've had for what would be traditionally, um, employees that work for the city, so finance director, um, we've had that in the past, we now con- contract that out, um, building officials. Um, we've had a contract building official for quite some time now. Uh, but just through discussions with city council, um, through various nuisance abatement questions, things like that, um, it was determined that having somebody as a full-time building official was, was something that city council wanted, it was approved, um, through various mechanisms, twenty eighteen budget, the position itself, the appointment, those were all approved. Um, so the level of service, this would be something that, um, I've had conversations with Samantha about and Justin, you know, we're, we're out there to, to make sure that the public has somebody that they can reach out to if they have questions about a project they wanna do. If somebody's installing a, a water heater, it's important that we get out there, the building official gets out there and, and looks at it, and if something's incorrect, the building official tells them how to do it correctly. It's in the, it's in the best interest of the community to have somebody like that working. Um, now, the contract building official position, it was a, it, it didn't, it didn't essentially cost the city any money. So the way the contract is set up or was set up is that we would never lose money on the building official posi- the contract position. But the, the level of service concerns, um, kinda drove that, the hiring of a, of a full-time building official, in my opinion. Does that help? Enterprise fund, so, um, the proposed action is to, uh, ask any questions you may have about this, um, and then consider formal adoption of, uh, of the organizational structure and basically, uh, direct staff to implement it as, as, uh, as adopted. So with that, we do have one, uh, one person, um, sign up for public comment at the time. Um, that's the end of my presentation, and so I'll turn it over to you, Mayor Hague.
Mrs. Mukha, you wanna come and address the city council, please?
I am Monica Muko. I live at one fifty-four Coventry Road here in town. And I have, uh, a couple of things to ask on behalf of Margaret Moore who had to make an exit earlier in the night, so if it's all right with you, I'll pose her questions that she messaged me here. Um, her first question, or all of her questions really result, revolve around the rec and community ed coordinator position. And her first question is, does anyone on the, um, council feel that that sixty-one thousand dollar salary for that new community, uh, what is it called, rec ed, whatever, coordinator position is high? That is her question. Do any of you feel like it might be high? That's what she's asking. I'll take that as a no. All right, and then she says, is the cost allocated in the budget for this year for that position? And I think Jasper may have answered that as part of his presentation.
It isn't exactly, um, like this, this position wasn't, um, thought about when the, uh, budget was adopted, but because of the, well, because, yeah, well, because of the, um, severance packages and things like that, reallocating funds, it, it can be funded this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that will give her the answer, okay.
Can I jump in and answer your first question?
Sure.
I, I don't remember, um, it raising a lot of, uh, red flags or anything, but I, I have a tendency to compare, um, professional positions to teaching positions and, and non-teaching positions, so sixty-one thousand dollars would be, uh, depending on how, the experience and so forth, is a pretty, pretty decent salary. It would be a, an above-average salary for a, for a mid-level teacher. So that did, but, but I think what, uh, you have to realize in all of this is that this, this pay equity study and parameters that we use to match up to whatever the job descriptions are is a, is a, is an instrument that we're basically tied to. And so with that in mind, um, I guess I've, I've trusted Jasper to do that analysis for that position as well as all the other ones in this structural.
Yeah, what I'd like to add is maybe with this, uh, pay equity study, maybe you could go ahead and educate, uh, those that are in attendance tonight, how that all come about and why a city like Lassure has to be compliant to something of that nature.
Oh, yeah, so we're, we're guided by state statute to meet pay equity requirements, um, that essentially look at to make sure there isn't any disparage between, um, gender as far as what the makeup of, um, the positions are in the city. So it's making sure that if you're a Recreation and Community Education Coordinator, and it, you're a female, you're getting paid what you should be getting paid. So it looks at all those things, it looks at comparable cities, and it makes sure that within your community, you fall within a range that shows that you're not one-sided all male, one-sided all female, and that there's pay equity between everybody. So it's state statute, we, uh, most recently submitted and it was accepted are, uh, in twenty sixteen. Um, and we'll have to do that again in twenty nineteen.
So every three years, it's something that's required for the city of Lassure to report on?
Correct, and, and we'll use tools like compensation and classification studies to make sure that everything is aligned. Um, if you remember back to our pay equity study, um, it was perfect, it was a perfect linear, um, linear graph of, of it, because we just recently went through that process. So, um, with this, when we're adding positions, we wanna make sure that we're not adding something that falls outside of that range, and then you have to do things like mediate those types of things if they're identified. So, hope that helps.
Next question, please.
All right, so with reference to the Times and Administrator Krugel's memorandum on the proposed reorganization that speaks to the pay increases for staff, he talks about grade twelve, grade sixteen, et cetera. And I'm just wanting to, it's more, more of a point of clarification, but wondering how many of you on the council with a show of hands know the pay ranges for those various steps on the Springstead scale? No, you've been provided that information. Okay, that's what I was wanting, that, just a point of clarification, so. Okay, I was misled by that, so. Um, and then the other point of clarification I just had also really got answered in Jasper's presentation tonight, but, um, I just, I just need more information to better understand the projected impacts of what's happening here, and, and I, I'm not in favor of it and I'm not opposed to it, I just need to better understand it, so I can be in favor of something like this. So I'm, I just, I'm gonna call your attention to those projections, and I don't know if Jasper, you can bring them up, but the, the slide I'm talking about is this one that talks about the twenty nineteen projected, um, numbers. So, um, at the April ninth meeting, Councilmember Johnson questioned whether or not these totals for twenty nineteen included the pay increases for staff still slated to move up throughout that pay scale. Um, you know, to get their step increases in addition to the CPI increase. These staff members would also receive that two-point-seven-five percent increase in addition to the CPI of two-point-six-five. Administrator Krugel's response, um, responded by saying that the number he provided in this memo and in the presentation doesn't include that, but that figure would later be provided by finance person Zachary Dowd when it came to budget preparations. So my question is, if this could be generated as you guys prepare to go into the twenty nineteen budget cycle, wouldn't it be, make the most sense that this total be provided to you as part of tonight's decision, so you know? I, I recognize there's little impact or a negative impact overall on the budget for this year, but wouldn't it be prudent of you to know what the impact is going into twenty nineteen and really have that number be a bit more clear? And I don't know if Jasper or who would like to respond, I don't know.
Yeah, I can, I can address it. So I try to leave out as many numbers that are constants. So the, the two-point-seven-five, the step increase, not everybody receives that. Or t- or, no, the two-point-seven-five is the, the increase between steps. So we have employees that are maxed out in that scale, so not everybody receives the two-point-seven-five. You have to receive a satisfactory review as well, so there's a potential that somebody might not receive that as well. That's why those numbers have been omitted and it was stated that it would be added to the, to the budget, um, like it has been in, in the past years. And Zach Dowd does calculate those numbers when he provides those, uh, finance numbers for the salary projections. You know, with knowing who's getting increases, um, potentially, and who's maxed out and not getting increases, so that's why those things are admitted, omitted, um, benefits are omitted from this too, because uh, it's just something the city provides, we don't know if a new employee is gonna be a, a single person or a family. So those things are unknowns, um, you could put an average in there, but it won't affect the overall percentages. That makes sense.
Do we have a past history that might indicate what we're looking at as far as potential step increases in a given year? And what that number would mean?
Well, I think it would be hard.
It, it would be hard to pin it down.
Yeah.
It'd be between two-point-five and two-point-seven-five, so if everybody got an increase, it'd be two-point-seven-five. If we have five people that are, that are maxed out, it would drop that percentage down slightly, so I'd say it'd be between two-five and two-seven-five. I don't know exactly what Zach uses for his calculation, but I guess it's within that range.
Somewhere in the ballpark of around thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand, somewhere in there for overall, for the entire workforce.
No, it's thirty-nine is what it's listed as right there.
That's, that's, that's the project for the, uh.
So I guess you could say that it would be probably around the exact same of, of what the two-point-six-five would be as a generality.
But it likely would be higher because there's people on the scale that will move about, right? Am I saying that correctly or am I misunderstanding?
Or are you saying like somebody that increases their grade?
Yeah.
Two-point-seven-five, yes.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying, like the actual impact is going to be greater than thirty-nine thousand six hundred and eight. Would you say that's a true statement?
I get what you're saying, and.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
And like I said, I'm just here to better understand and understand what the impact is gonna be. So I feel like from your perspective, if I was sitting in your shoes as a council member tonight, I would kinda wanna better understand what the, what the impact is, what you gotta prepare for, what you're up against going into the budget cycle in twenty nineteen. So for me, I would want that number, I would wanna know if Zachary Dowd can produce that going into July, August, and September when you start to develop your budget cycle. Perhaps it would be good information for you to have before tonight's decision. That's what I was getting at.
Can I just comment on this word? We're going from forty employees un- under the current arrangement to forty employees under our reorganized arrangement. All of the things that we don't know for sure about the new proposal are the same ones we'd have about the old proposal, it, it's proportionate. If we didn't change anything, we, the questions you have about the exact increase, we would, we'd be in the same place. So I, that's the way I looked at it.
We're still gonna have X number of people that are gonna be moving up for that two-point-seven-five percent by grade difference. And of course, we're gonna have the COLA situation that's gonna be tacked on to the workforce too, usually because of.
Right, and they get both the step and the COLA. Am I saying that correctly? So they really would get five percent or something like that. Right.
When you were city clerk.
Sure, nope, that's what I said, I'm just getting a point of clarification.
And we are dropping down four people that were at the highest portion that they could go at, and starting with people that are lower down, uh, and on that scale.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's gonna be movement, you're gonna see that movement in the scale, and I just, I don't know, me personally, I just feel like, you know, if that number could be produced, you know, I'm not gonna repeat myself, so that's, we're, we're here late, you guys have a lot of hang time here, so, so it's not necessary, but. All right, so lastly, I'll just, I'll just conclude, I want to, um, publicly apologize to Stacy because I know that for reasons outside of my control, you guys are all aware that it was me that submitted questions to Newell back for the, uh, ninth meeting, and I asked for my identity remain anonymous, just really not because I'm a disgruntled former city employee, but because we're talking about people's lives here and their salaries, and it can get kinda sensitive. You know, I wanted my questions to be, um, not a personal attack on Stacy, and I know that's likely how it felt, because if I was in her shoes, I likely would've felt that same way. But more about financial prudence and responsibility for you guys as a city council. Oh, I'm gonna get emotional, 'cause I just, this is also about the people I worked with for so many years, so I apologize, it's not, it's not to come at any of you, it's not to, you know, personally attack Stacy, but I just want you to know, I was hopeful that because I worked with most of you, either in my role as city clerk or served with you in another capacity in the community, would, you know that I'm a kind person with more dignity than come at you, you know, with these frustrations. Um, I'm, I'm not a disgruntled former employee, I'm happy where I'm at, I'm happy to help you guys, I'm happy to serve in the community. Certainly, if I was disgruntled, I would've had far more issues over the last two years I've been gone, so, please trust that. So again, Stacy, my apologies if my questions made you feel uncomfortable, 'cause that truly was not my intent. And I, I do believe that this proposed reorganization is not something you are a large part in developing, so I just want you to know that. So I, I'll take any questions you guys have of me. of me, but that's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mukha.
I have a question, Mayor. Is there any, or even Jasper for that matter, to her point, is it possible to get the information from Zach before we do anything, or?
Well, so I've been thinking about it, and with the movement of it, there's essentially four people that are retiring, right? And then we have three positions that are proposed to have great increases. So I was just telling the mayor, I think that that number is fairly negligible as far as that movement goes. Just for the fact that we have people retiring, I would say we can definitely go into detail, and you guys can hold it to me, hold me to it, that those numbers will be negligible when we do the budget process, because I'm just doing it in my mind. We have basically three people going up and then four people going down. So I would say that we could, but for the sake of implementing something, because we do have two people leaving in a month or so, a little over a month, I think it would be my recommendation that we move forward and get that information to city council during the budget process. Or if it is necessary, I can have Zach put something together sooner. But I would say that it'd be my recommendation that I would like to get moving on this, just because that number I feel is fairly negligible, and it might actually be lower as opposed to higher.
Thank you for answering it.
Any other questions?
Question, but.
Concerns?
You know, I have to look at numbers day in and day out. I have to be judging what's going to happen in the future. I have to be judging against what happened in the past. And I can tell you right now that it's never 100%. I've never had the same year every single year. I can make the best guesses that I can, and they're the best educated guesses, and I'm pretty darn good at it.
That's why I have a call on projections.
And there are always those factors you can count on, and there are always those factors that you don't want to count on. We went through that at Merpuck, going through. We didn't want, if you'll remember when we sat at the meeting, we didn't add in what the overages were going to be, because that's money that we don't know what's going to happen. When Agropure decides that they're going to start getting rid of their waste product rather than bringing it into Merpuck, then we don't get to charge for those overages. They can have that taken to a landfill. That was, would have been revenue coming in. So we take that out altogether. We don't know what it's going to be. I think that our team that was on planning or budget and personnel spent an enormous amount of time that was basically a full-time job, when you look at how many hours were put into it, to take into effect, into an account, every least detail that you could possibly think of. In my life, I hire a manager. And when I hire a manager, I hire a manager to do a job. And it's not my job to second-guess whether or not that person is doing a job. Every person that has a management job that has been hired generally takes pride in what it is they're doing, and they're not in it to mess up. If we step in over every least thing, not saying that this is every least thing, this is a big deal, but then it's considered micromanaging. And in the position that we're in, we're supposed to be looking at it from this level, and Jasper's supposed to be looking at it at this level with his personnel underneath. There's nothing in this that I look at that doesn't make sense. There's nothing in this that says, oh, we did eliminate a job. We eliminated a contracted job and brought in somebody that is going to have a vested interest in the city of La Sure. I have a hard time arguing against that in a reorg. It makes sense to be moving the Parks Department in with the Streets Department. They use heavy equipment. It's what they do. It doesn't make sense that you wouldn't be able to interchange those things. And then guess what? It's the citizens' equipment. It's not to one department. You know, I don't see where this doesn't make sense.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm glad that we waited two weeks to give public opportunity and for the council to think about things more. And even though we didn't have a rush of people coming in and offering their input, I think it's, there's a lot of things to talk about in this. These are major changes with major hopes for some real significant improvements going forward to match up with our economic development, our comp plan, the downtown master plan, the community center plan. We've got so many visions and goals and ideas, and we need, now we need the personnel structure in order to accomplish that. And that's what this does. So there's, I look at this as with almost no increase, except for the enterprise ones. I mean, that's a, that's an accomplishment we should celebrate. Will everything work out exactly the way we hope? I don't know, but we're giving it our best shot. And I think I'm really proud of the due diligence that we've given this and the extra consideration we've taken the last couple of weeks to think about it some more.
Councilmember Krugman, Councilmember Huntington, anything?
Nope. Well, I'm very stuck on this whole thing, so I appreciate what Monica had said. And I'm going to be voting no, so that's just my prerogative.
Because?
I just feel the people that have come to me about this whole thing made a lot of sense to just my conscience.
But help us to understand what's the problem?
Well, I think basically what, we don't know what's going to go on in the future, I guess. I don't know. I just, the way I feel, guys, I'm just, just the way I feel.
That's fine. Okay. Appreciate you explaining. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to go ahead and approve the organizational structural amendment, and go ahead and get this off our plate so that implementation could be made by our city staff.
All right. The, what is the actual motion? What would the actual motion be to approve?
Formal adoption of the organizational structure amendment by resolution at the April 23, 2018 city council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Four one? Okay, we now move into our comments, reports, items of appreciation. Well, we go ahead and start. You, Councilmember Krugman, please.
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. How about Councilmember Huntington?
Last week, we had a special meeting for our transit that we are applying for a grant.
A grant for a new bus, then, or?
No, for operations and stuff.
Okay, a grant for operations. Okay. They seem relatively optimistic that this is something that's going to get approved?
I think so. That's it.
And did you have an HRA meeting also in the last couple of weeks, or is that coming up?
Nope, that's this Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
John could probably say this, too. In our EDA meeting, we have a work session on the comp plan, the work plan that the EDA has to follow up through the comp plan. We have a work session marked May 2 from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock to talk about that and discuss it in depth and see what it means and what we can do going forward. And that includes the downtown master plan. We also schedule our EDA meeting a couple of weeks early because of conflicts with the Memorial Day weekend where we usually had it.
Councilmember Favelas?
I have nothing to report on any commission meetings or anything. I do want to say that it is, it's a pleasure for everybody to be here. I'm sorry that it is so late. My meetings with the city started at 4 o'clock this afternoon, and there's been one after the next, and some of you have been here at least since 5 o'clock. Thank you, everybody, for showing such an interest. It really does matter. We are trying to do good things in this town.
Thank you. How about our city clerk? Anything? City attorney?
No, sir.
How about our city administrator?
I got a couple of things. I know everybody wants to get out of here. But, so we do have our PAC. Again, if there's anybody that would like to apply, please apply. We need two more applicants. Once we get those applications in, city council will evaluate. Hopefully, we can get rolling on our PAC. We do have a planning commission seat open as well, if there's interest in planning commission. One thing I wanted to address is the Friday before the storm, I let employees out early, just because Samantha and myself were out in St. Peter, and it was hailing, and I called up Randy Snow and said, Randy, I think we should let people go. And he's like, really? It's not, nothing much is going on up here. So it was a Friday. Most employees work until 1:30 on Friday. I let them out basically at 11. Some staff stayed, but we're working on things internally to kind of make up that time, because if you remember, the weather didn't really get bad until Saturday. So we're working on it. I had a resident, hopefully I befriended Marvin Sullivan. He's here tonight. I said I'd mention it, and I did. So I think it's the right thing to do. That's all I got.